Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Little. I'm the mayor for the District of North Vancouver, and I'm going to call to order the continuation of the public hearing for 904 944 Litten Street, the zoning bylaw amendments. And I have a bit of a script that I need to read at the front end of the meeting. It's going to take a few minutes, but we'll get through to speakers as quickly as we can. Welcome. This is the continuation of the November 17th, 2020 public hearing for zoning bylaw amendment 8423 pertaining to 904 to 944 Litten Street. You'll recall that the first night of the hearing was terminated early due to technical problems. And we're confident that these issues have been addressed. So we're carrying on this evening. We've changed the technology. So we're no longer streaming our WebEx. We're now using Zoom platform, which we've been testing out for our council meetings for the last couple of weeks. And people have been very positive about the service. This hearing will be held virtually with all participants, including council, staff, the applicant, signed up speakers, and observers, all doing so by electronic means. Public participation in this hearing is being accommodated by speakers having signed up in advance, as stated in the notice of hearing, as well as being streamed live over the internet. In addition, those observing over the internet who did not sign up to speak in advance, but decided to do so once the hearing was underway, may dial in via telephone to speak. Information on how to do this will be shared over the live stream once we have exhausted the list of speakers that we've prepared. The electronic means being employed for this hearing allow for effective two-way audio communication. While those who have signed up in advance will also receive video of the hearing via the Zoom software. As always, written submissions will be received by the municipal clerk on behalf of and shared with council at any time up to the time the hearing is closed. These may be submitted to input@dnv.org. Therefore, in this manner, all persons who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard and to present written submissions. I will remind you that the chair has established the following rules for this hearing. We will go through the established list of speakers. At the end of the speaker's list, I may call for any other speakers not on the speaker's list. These are the dial-in speakers, if any. You will have five minutes to address council for a first time. Begin your remarks to council by stating your name and approximate street address. After everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five-minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaw under consideration this evening. If you've provided written submission, there's no need to read it in, as it will already have been seen by council. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaw under consideration at this hearing. Some important notes about public hearings. Council is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaw. Council may, however, ask clarifying questions through staff. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaw, which council has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available online at dnv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a third night. At the conclusion of the public input, council may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension of the hearing, or council may close the hearing, after which council should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being streamed live over the internet and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. The video and draft minutes of the first night have been made available on the district's website and for those who wish to review them. Accordingly, we will pick up where we left off with the next speaker who is speaking, which will be speaker number 24. Before I just get into the speaker's list, I will also say that at a later point in the evening, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, we'll flash up the input@dnv.org website, or sorry, email address information. If you wish to speak a second time, it'd be really helpful if we start producing a second-time speakers list. And so if you think, yeah, I missed one of my points or I wanted to add something, then just send your name back to the input@dnv.org, and our clerks will make sure that we start producing the second-time speakers list as well, because we want to make sure that we exhaust all speakers as we go along. Ms. Clerk, I'm just going to double-check. Are the, are there any other items that you'd like me to address before we resume the meeting?
Your worship, there are no other items, no.
So what I'm going to go to is the speakers list that we created on the first night, and we're going to resume where we left off. And that is speaker number 24, which is Mohammed Jamil, followed by Patrick Stafford Smith. Mohammed Jamil, are you on the call with us? Mohammed Jamil, I can't hear you. Are you, have you joined us?
Your worship, it does not appear as though Mr. Jamil is on the call.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to mark down next to his name, and then we'll go back to him after we've gone through the list. And if he's joined back up again, we'll get him back into the order. These are all just the small accommodations we have to make to make virtual meetings function. Patrick Stafford Smith, I don't see you on the participants' list yet, but Patrick, are you there? Same situation for Patrick. Don't worry, we'll get them in. Rowena Santinell, Rowena Santinell.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening.
Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rowena, and I'm a Habitat for Humanity Greater Vancouver family, living in our Habitat home in Richmond. I'm speaking today to support the Anthem Development at Seymour Estates, and here is why. Living in our Habitat for Humanity home has been a tremendous blessing for us. Before moving here, a year and a half ago, we were living in a small, one-bedroom apartment full of cockroaches and mice. My son got the bedroom, and I got the living room. My car had been broken into a few times over the years in the basement garage. Year after year, the rent was increasing, meaning that I could not plan financially for our future. There were all contributing factors to my stress as a single mom. I found it very challenging to anticipate ever breaking this substandard rental cycle or finding a home that was adequate to our basic needs. But all that disappeared when we moved into our Habitat for Humanity home a year and a half ago. The benefits we have experienced since moving here were definitely the warm feeling of community and safety. My son learned how to finally ride a bike here last summer. I learned how to grow our own vegetables in our backyard, and despite the current times, we had been able to invite our friends and families over. Additionally, through the Habitat model, I pay a fixed amount of 30% of my income towards my home. And with each payment, I am building equity with Habitat that will allow me to eventually own a home in the open market with part of the monthly payments that I make. I can plan for the future of my son and myself and know that we are financially stable and self-reliant in a home that is safe and healthy. These are all experiences that one hopes to provide for our children. However, the current housing crisis in Vancouver and lack of decent, affordable rentals and models that allow for eventual homeownership are few and wait lists are long. I strongly encourage you to please support this proposed development that will see numerous families in Habitat home propose and have their lives change, as mine has been. Having affordable rentals and rent-to-own options all within this development is fantastic and will mean a healthy mix of households living in the new community. Over 300 families will feel as we do. We are so grateful to finally live in a beautiful place that we can finally call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Rowena Santinell. Next up, we have Louisa Bridgman. Louisa, have you joined the meeting?
Sorry, through your worship, we've left Louisa Bridgman on. However, she's had a family event and is likely unable to attend this evening.
Thank you. And Louisa did call me earlier in the week to say that she might not be able to join us for the hearing. But, okay, thank you. I'll just double-check in by the end of the night just to see if Louisa does join the meeting. Camelia, I can't hear you.
Yes, I'm here. I apologize.
No, that's great. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council, my name is Camelia Abadi, and I've been a member of the North Shore Advisory Committee on disability issues for the past six years. As a volunteer with the ACDI, I have spent my time helping make community spaces and housing projects more accessible and have been advocating for more affordable housing options on the North Shore. I'm here today in my capacity as a community member who lives with an invisible disability as a result of this stroke at age 46. It is important to me that I share my story with you so you'll have a better understanding of why I support the project at 904 Litten Street. I can tell you that my life changed significantly after that medical crisis. In my life, I've been no stranger to tragedy. I left Iran after seeing my own mother executed when I was 17 years old. Life in Canada was a gift. When my medical situation changed, I had to give up working and look for a new and affordable housing. I spent lots of time asking staff at the municipal level and local organization where I could find affordable housing. And people just kept passing me along. I was finally told to go to the local shelter. I lived there for nine months before something became available. When you're ill and in a state of housing insecurity, it is hard to even begin to make yourself well or to feel safe or to even feel of value. Housing is the center of the universe for many people. And for me, I felt alone in this world without the security of a safe place that I could afford and feel proud of. Once I was situated, I could start to feel like a valuable member of the community again. I volunteer all over the North Shore and try to help others with housing insecurities because I know firsthand what it is like to live that estate in unknowing. As a volunteer with North Shore Community Policing, I also meet many people who are under housed and forced to live with many roommates that they don't know in order to find something affordable. Since all the proposed units meet the basic accessible design guidelines, it means that enhancement can be made as people age in place or, as in my case, with my invisible disability could be enhanced in the future if necessary. The securement of the units made available at the 15% to 25% less market rate will be a huge help to people like me who were in a situation where I just needed to find some place that I could afford and make it home. From there, all things in my life flourished, and I want the same for others in my community. Especially during these times of COVID where we realize how close people are to losing their housing. We are all unnoticed for the fact that there are just simply not enough affordable rental options available for all types of people, single to small families. I want to lend my support to this project at 904 Litten Street as I believe that the more rental in the community, the better a community can try and be filled with diversity. This district has not approved any project since its election, but we are in need of social housing that is affordable. And the longer we wait to build, it's more in need we will be in the future. Let's make it happen. Thank you. Thank you for giving me opportunities to share my story.
Thank you, Camelia, and thank you for your service. Next, I have speaker number 29, Howard Dahl. Howard Dahl, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Mayor Little. Can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, magic, then.
Good to hear from you.
Yes, you too. It's going to be an easier technology than the previous evenings.
Oh, good, good. Well, you have five minutes to address the hearing. Go for it.
Well, thank you. My name is Howard Dahl, and I live nearby this proposed development and drive by it almost twice per day. And pre-COVID, I use the pool at Ron Andrews fairly regularly. I have lived in this area for about 17 years on Porto Place. I listened to the speakers at the November 17th meeting and those before me tonight. I have adjusted my comments because several of these people have said what I was going to say. My recollection is that all 22 community members who spoke at the last meeting expressed strong support for this project. Their reasons varied from supporting housing diversity and affordability through the rent-to-own program and below-market housing to the environmental merits of the project. Clearly, the community is behind this project. I also am in favor of this project. However, there are a few points I would like to raise as I feel they have not been addressed yet. My concern relates to parking on the site. I asked the question, who will live in the dwellings created on this site? Certainly, the hope is that people working on the North Shore will reside on the North Shore. We have heard several speakers mention their desire to do so. People will easily be able to commute by bicycle, bus, or shared vehicle from this location. Also, I assume that this facility will have excellent internet for those able to work at home. But one group of individuals left out of consideration are those whose work involves transporting material and tools. Tradesmen today often take a work vehicle, truck, or van home. The old method, drive to a central location to pick up the work truck, is not used as frequently today. Take a drive down most streets in North Vancouver with street parking and notice how many trucks and vans you see. There should be provision on this site for parking stalls large enough to accommodate these vehicles if we want tradespeople to live here. Otherwise, these vehicles will be parked on the street or at Ron Andrews. There are not enough parking stalls on this site. Fewer parking stalls will not make people change their behavior. Build more stalls, and if they sit empty, then turn them into a lawn down the road. When this site is completed in a few years from now, parking demand will be as it is now. So just down the Parkway on Apex Avenue, I noticed it's full of overflow parking from the development right across on Mount Seymour Parkway. There are not enough parking stalls on this site. Lastly, I would like to see the community amenity contributions go toward revitalizing Ron Andrews since it is right next door to that development. And that's my comments. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, Howard Dahl. Next speaker I have is Richard Cook. Richard Cook, are you able to hear me?
I am. Can you hear me, mayor?
Yes, I can, clearly. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
And I have a couple of slides to share here, so I'm going to share my screen if I can. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Little and council. My name's Richard Cook, and I live with five other family members on Hardy Crescent, a few blocks from the proposed development. I'm the big orange dinosaur with a scary smile in this photo of us getting ready for Halloween this year. I do hope you can see that.
I'm, hang on here. Am I the only one who can't see it?
I can't see it at all.
You try it.
It's not sharing your screen, Richard.
It's not share? Let's try it.
Oh. Oh, okay. Now I see all your glory there.
Thank you kindly. It won't take long. Just a couple here. So we've lived in the neighborhood for three years, and I'm here to speak tonight in favor of the bylaw 8423 rezoning. We enjoy the neighborhood immensely and, including the community spirit, which remains very much in evidence. Even in 2020, and this picture of us from Halloween is a great example. As well as a neighbor, I'm a member of the Executive of LAI, which is an honorary society focused on land economics. There's 25 chapters and 2,000 members worldwide. A few weeks ago, it was my honor to moderate a webinar with participants from 20 cities in North America and Europe. And those participants came from government, lenders, consultants, and developers. And we polled participants on two questions, and the results are on this slide. And the first question, people said that only 25% of people who were typically at the office were there on October 30th. And looking forward to next April, people thought there would be more people at the office, but still only 38% of normal. So any recovery of offices or downtowns is expected to be quite slow according to this survey of real estate industry leaders in 20 cities around the globe. We're in an unprecedented time of challenge for all businesses, retail or real estate. And what this chart says to me is that after councils and staff have done good due diligence, we should in general welcome proposals for investment in our communities in 2021, both here and further afield. Those willing to invest in the future deserve our full attention, especially now. I've looked at some, but by no means all, of the 1,045 pages of material submitting that has resulted in staff's recommendation to support first reading and refer this proposal to public hearing. In my view, after the multiple reviews and changes spanning several years, the project is at a point where it has my full support. It's in a location which is benign in terms of accommodating the proposed building heights. It will not interfere significantly, in my opinion, with neighbors' views. That there is more density than what was on the site before is part of what ensures that there can be more rather than less affordability for the next 50 years. It will also provide an important underpinning to better transit and community services. It will provide an option for people like my wife and I. Should we want to move from our upstairs-downstairs arrangement and leave more room for our growing family and yet still be able to stay in our neighborhood near all of our grandchildren? At the last municipal election, a majority voted for the district to borrow up to $150 million to contribute to affordable housing. I don't know how much has been done with that very clear mandate from the taxpayers, but what I do see with this project is an applicant providing innovative commitments to affordable housing as part of the overall proposal at zero cost to the taxpayers and contributing cash to the community on top of that. I'm impressed that council was able to negotiate a commitment to sustainable energy in advance of first reading. I've given a thorough read of the transportation impact assessment. In my own career, I've commissioned and reviewed dozens of these types of studies. This one has gone through at least four major drafts over the course of three and a half years. The imprint of district staff on the scope of the review, including a variety of sensitivity analyses, is abundantly clear. With the off-site works proposed, the project will meet the district's criteria for transportation impacts, and there will be innovative approaches to transportation demand management. And if we look at my graphic on how slowly we anticipate a return to the previous era of travel in our cities, I'm even more convinced that the traffic impacts have been mitigated. So in sum, considering the length and breadth of reviews of this project over many years now, I offer my full support for council to go forward with rezoning this site to allow the project as proposed. Thank you kindly.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Rob Haynes, followed by Leslie Grigg. Speaker number 31, Rob Haynes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Little and esteemed council members. I'd like to start off by talking about the request of the developer here to ask us to change the zoning so they can have a quarter of a billion dollars in the development here. I am opposed to this development for quite a few reasons, actually. I have it broken down into four major categories, which include the traffic concerns, issues which contravene the Maplewood Town Center Plan and the official city plan. I have some site-specific concerns. And with all those things considered, again, I am opposed. I'll start off with traffic. Now, we all know, living on the North Shore, that traffic is challenging. This development is not going to help with the challenge that we currently face right now. Based on the traffic assessment done by BUNT, the Litten Corner will see a traffic increase by 600%. 600%, that's a six-fold increase. Cars going from 30 per peak hour to 185 per peak hour. I'm only talking about the cars going out. The whole total in those peak hours is 267. That includes going into Windsor Secondary, and again, those coming out. With 75% of vehicles exiting the North Shore to go to the other side over the Narrows, that's a huge increase in traffic to the other shore. The other part about the assessment, the traffic assessment itself that I question, is it only looked at the four lights that are in the immediate vicinity, including Broadview, Emerson, the Litten Corner itself, and over to Berkeley. One particular aspect that perhaps should have also been included is what is going to be the impact on Browning Street? At Browning, you have to cross the median in order to go opposite direction. This amount of traffic could make it significantly more difficult for people who live there to get around that particular corner. Should they choose to go down Browning towards Windridge, which is a road that needs a bit of work itself, to come out at Riverside, they would face the same problem turning left onto Riverside. The assessment itself has looked at all of those four corners as only being a C grade. That, of course, is manageable, but when you add 600% more traffic to it, what more do you expect to have happened there? What's that knock-on effect that's going to occur? And this is just this one development that we see right here. In my opinion, we cannot look at developments as individual entities. We must look at the collection of the developments that are going on with us. When we consider the Maplewood Town Center and the developments that are proposed by Darwin Properties, again, two different properties, that Riverside and Old Dollerton, that are looking at about 340 units themselves, the additional traffic that's going to be there from those cars, added to this one here. You've got 27 north down Mount Seymour Parkway, which is building townhomes with two-car garages. Of course, they are looking at a development down at Deep Cove. That's another 50 cars that could be coming down there. In total, we could be looking at 2,000 vehicles parking in this neighborhood when we include the Innovation District that is also proposed. Now, I understand that the Saleo Watuth Nation has requested to turn that land into reserve land. And being that we live in a reconciliation era and a prime minister who is in favor of those particular things, it's a high chance that that's going to happen. If that occurs and zoning is taken away from the district to manage, what is going to be that impact if they put 1,100 homes there as well? This is looking like it's, it's like it's death by a thousand cuts. It is one more, one more, one more, one more, one more. In this small area, everybody who lives east of Riverside is affected by this. Every single resident who is here. If you live in Blue Ridge, you know that to get the slightest little thing, you need to drive your car somewhere. And with those particular things in mind, how can we deal with the traffic? Now, I want to move on a little bit to talk about the official city plan and the Maplewood Town Center Plan. Now, both of those plans themselves have asked that developers include, for one thing, community services that should include seniors' development spaces, should include childcare spaces. This particular development has none of that included. This particular development has none of that included. Not a single thing. Not a single thing. It also seeks for co-employment opportunities whereby fifty percent of those residents who live there should be able to work there. And under this particular development, there are no jobs being created there. And yes, there'll be a coffee shop and maybe five to ten people will work at it, but that's not employment for the residents who are going to live there. That's not true employment. Where do people work down here? It's one and a half kilometers to the Maplewood Town Center as it exists. It's two kilometers up to Park Gate. Where are the jobs for these people? It's not going to exist for them there. The other thing-
Interject here, Rob. So your five minutes is expired, and so either you can draw to a close, or if you want to send an email to input@dnb.org, we'll get you signed up to be one of the first second-time speakers once we go through the list.
So I need to email again? I could wrap it up fairly quickly if you just allow me to continue for a couple more minutes.
No, I can't do that unfortunately, just out of fairness. So I'm going to encourage you to send a note to input@dnb.org, and they'll give you a full five-minute opportunity to speak again at a later point in the evening.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Little and Council.
Thank you, Rob Haynes. Next speaker is Leslie Grigg, followed by Jackie Coulter. Leslie Grigg, can you hear me? Leslie Grigg, I can't hear you. Menel Clark, can you just double-check and see if Leslie Grigg is on the list?
It appears as though Ms. Grigg has not joined the meeting at this time.
I'll put a note and we'll return back, double-check again later in the meeting. Jackie Coulter, followed by Shane DeWalt. Jackie Coulter, can you hear me?
Your worship, it appears Ms. Coulter is not joining the meeting at this time either.
Same there. Shane DeWalt, I do see you on our meeting here and then followed by Peter Teaven. Shane, you have, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and Councilor. My name is Gene DeBeld, and I have been a district resident for almost my entire life. Now, as in a doubt, I have found it really difficult to find accessible and affordable accommodations that allow me to remain in my chosen community. The district of North Vancouver needs an increasing and total accessible and affordable housing. The project at nine oh four Litten Street looks to be able to provide some of those requirements. I am living in an apartment with my partner, both of us use power wheelchairs. It is astonishing to me that access one affordable unit all seem to be a studio apartment, space or one bedroom and not a space a couple could share together, a space a couple of both use power wheelchairs. And have other mobility devices and the technologies that is required for the basics of daily tasks. One needs space for this type of living, and I am pleased to see the variety of units includes studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. Secured at between fifteen to twenty-five percent below market rent in this project. The variety of units available people to have options and not be stuck living in a living situation that is less than desirable. I know parents have that after a child with a disability who also need housing of the nature and so the variety of choices is fantastic. It is also exciting to see a range of accessible housing types proposed, including apartments stacked at townhouses and ground-oriented townhouses. Many council members know me from the community and know that I have spent more than six years on the North Shore Project Committee on Disability Insurance. And that I am working for the North Shore Disability Resort and I am really here in my capacity as a resident of the district that lives with a disability. And it is so important to me that my voice is being heard. People with disabilities don't often speak at public hearings, figure out the many barriers and believe that nothing really changes for us anyway. So why bother? I want to see some positive change in my community and since my, I may be looking, I may be looking to make a change in housing. Maybe someday soon would like to know that there are options available when that time comes for my partner. And I can consider that often. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Shane. You're most welcome. Next up, I have Peter Teaven.
Good evening, your worship.
Welcome, Peter. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Just putting a little bit of a graphic presentation up that I prepared as speaking notes. Thank you, your worship and council, for the record of the hearing. Peter Teaven, nineteen hundred block, Indian River Crescent. Speaking tonight on behalf of myself at a future moment tonight, I may comment on behalf of the Seymour Community Association, but the comments I have now are strictly of my own part. I'll just kind of touch base back to my comments to the council at first reading, where I can imagine I almost saw several jaws hit the floor as I actually stepped forward in favor of first reading for this proposal. Because frequently in the past, I've been very reluctant to endorse many proposals. At that time, I explained to you that, you know, notwithstanding the pending conclusion of the OCP review, I have an inherent belief that we are not in need of more market condos, certainly not substantial numbers of them in the district of North Vancouver. But I do know quite sincerely that we need more diverse types of housing, more rentals, rent-to-owns, affordable housing, and so on. One of the first things I did is I reached out to both the applicant and also to Mr. Veers. And I looked at this from a single point of view. Here we have a rather large vacant lot sitting in the central part of the Seymour and Blue Ridge communities of the district of North Vancouver. And my first conclusion is something is going to get built here. It's certainly not going to remain vacant forever. Something's going to get built, and the question is what? Now, I know that there's a number of people in the community who don't inherently know this. Council, you all inherently do know that a property owner does not need council approval to build whatever they want to build so long as it meets their current zoning. There are some bylaws about the type and form of construction. But that, in essence, was my question to Mr. Veers in the planning department. What is the applicant entitled to build today? And what are they asking to build over and above that? And what you see here is a spreadsheet that I constructed that shows what they have today is they have the right under their current zoning to build a hundred and fourteen units, which comprise two hundred and five thousand square feet of residential. That's an average of about eighteen hundred square feet per unit. And my belief is, and this is something, of course, that council, it's your job to discern, is if collectively the community and the mayor and council say no, what then will the applicant do? Will they sell it to somebody who's going to try to throw spaghetti against the wall and see if it sticks that time? Or are they going to rebuild what they're allowed to build, sell it, and move on? And so that was an inherently important question to me. What are they allowed to build under the current zoning? The answer is a hundred and fourteen eighteen hundred square foot average units comprising two hundred and five thousand square feet. Now, if you look at the below area proposed between Site one, two, three, four, I broke out those numbers as per the numbers Mr. Veers gave me. Hopefully, they haven't changed, or I might be a little inaccurate. And I highlighted in green those things that I just told you that, in my opinion, we need. We need more market rentals. We need more submarket rentals. Rent-to-own, I know people have some questions about it, but there's a lot of interest in it. I'd like to see how that might work. I call that a desirable as well. So my question is, what are they asking for that's extra? And I broke it down into the market purchase units versus those things that I consider desirable. And here's what I found out. What the applicant is asking to do is to build two hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet of market purchase units, which is sixty thousand feet more than they already have the right to do. That's a thirty percent increase, and while that is significant, in exchange for allowing them to build an extra sixty thousand square feet, our community will get ninety thousand square feet of what, again, I called desirable units. The market rentals, the submarket rental, the rent-to-own units. Can you check my time, whether this is time to break or?
That was my little five-minute warning there.
Okay, I'd like to come back and finish.
Very much, Peter, and I'll make sure that the clerk adds your name, or if you can send a note to input@dnb, we'll get it.
Will do.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to remind council that any questions that they may have, they can forward to Michael Hartford. He'll be the one managing questions. So if you have questions as we go along, we'll plan to take a couple of breaks just to check in with council questions along the way. Speaker number thirty-six is Helga Doherty. Helga, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to share my opinion. I would like to encourage you to approve the project. We are longtime residents of the Roche Point neighborhood. In fact, we've lived in our present home for thirty-five years. Our children were raised in this neighborhood, and they consider it a wonderful experience. I believe it's important to create neighborhoods so that not only my children, but other young people have a reasonable opportunity to stay in the district. This will not happen if we see single-family homes or worth nothing at all being built. In my opinion, we need more choices like condos, apartments, townhouses for sale and for rent. I'm also concerned that myself and other seniors are not able to find housing that they are able to downsize with and stay within this community. We have talked a lot about downsizing, but we love the area, and there are very few options. The townhomes and condos at Seymour Estates would be great for people like us. In particular, I was impressed with the opportunity for car share, e-bikes, and translinks. As we, when we retire, we do not want to have two automobiles. This is a great proposal, and I believe it would be good for the neighborhood, and I hope to see it built. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Helga Doherty. Next speaker I have is Chantal Taylor, speaker number thirty-seven. Can you hear me? Okay, I can't hear Chantal Taylor. Just checking in with the clerk. Is Chantal Taylor signed in?
At this point in time, Ms. Taylor has not joined the meeting.
The next speaker is David Seaward, speaker number thirty-eight. Can you hear me?
Sorry, your worship. I've also been notified that Mr. Seaward has not joined the meeting at this time either.
Speaker thirty-nine, Josh Gaze.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors, and thank you very much for your time. My name, as I mentioned, is Josh Gaze. I'm a five-year resident of the Seymour community at thirteen twenty-one Emerson Way with my wife and two young children. Allow me to say that I appreciate your patience over the course of this hearing as well as others to listen to so many on this issue of required housing and renewal at this property in particular. I will be brief, given the time of, the amount of time already, the input and what has already been shared, much of which has already covered my family's opinion on this proposal. We have been following the progression of this project for several years and are pleased to see it before council this evening for final consideration. In my time as a resident of Blue Ridge, we witnessed this site first as a decrepit knockdown of a development, then as a demolition site, and now as a vacant lot. I pass it daily on my way to work, and I'm pleased to see the evolution of the proposal that has taken place over the years. While I am not a planning expert, it does seem like planning staff and the prospective developer have worked hard to create a mixed community with a range of housing options to accommodate a diverse set of residents, while not overwhelming the property with high density, which obviously is important. In our opinion, the building's architecture is handsome and reflective of our wooded community with natural elements incorporated. It seems both outdoor and indoor communal spaces have been considered for future residents. A big part of what initially attracted my wife and I to this neighborhood was the access to nature, public amenities, schools, but also to be around a diverse network of young families. For the same reasons that we were attracted to the neighborhood, I expect this proposal will offer opportunity to new young members of our community, which we welcome. I won't add much more, except add my voice and support and to encourage council to support this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh Gaze. The next speaker I have is Tristan Crowther, followed by Sarah Higerty. Tristan Crowther, can you hear me? I can't hear Tristan Crowther. Ms. Lance, can we double-check if Mr. Crowther on the line?
Your worship, Mr. Crowther has provided notice that he will no longer be available to appear, and he will provide a written submission.
Okay. Speaker forty-one, Sarah Higerty. Can you hear me?
Your worship, Ms. Higerty has not connected to the meeting at this time.
Thank you. Speaker number forty-two, Eric Anderson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Eric. Yes, I can hear you. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Little. I may as well tell you that my presentation is likely to be over five minutes, so I've already signed up for part two. And maybe you can just give me a heads-up so I can stop, you know, and finish a paragraph when I'm losing on here.
I will let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Little and members of council. My name is Eric Anderson. I live at two five eight nine Derbyshire Way. Tonight, I'm not speaking on behalf of any organizations that I may belong to. Unlike many people who have expressed support for the proposal, I live in Blue Ridge, which is close to the actual site. I previously expressed some concerns about the proposed redevelopment of the Seymour Estates, both to the developer, to staff, and to council. Although some changes have been made over the last year, I still have concerns about a number of issues. Starting with density and traffic, I feel the density is too high. The number of units will triple from one hundred and fourteen units to three forty-one units, which will also mean that there will be substantially more vehicles on the roads. According to the BUNT traffic assessment prepared for Anthem, this will mean up to two hundred and sixty-seven vehicles per AM peak hour. This is a whopping seven hundred and ninety percent increase from the thirty vehicle trips per hour it used to be to two hundred and sixty-seven. It will be going on, it will be going from an average of one vehicle every two minutes to six to eight vehicles every two minutes in peak hour. These are not my assumptions, but are clearly stated on page ninety-nine of the BUNT report. Traffic is definitely still an issue in Seymour, and once COVID-nineteen hopefully will be behind us sometime next year, it remains to be seen how many people will go back to using public transportation instead of their own vehicles. Changes for Highway number one have not been completed yet, and these may or may not ease the well-known traffic problems in Seymour. Nobody at this point can guarantee that the proposed changes on a highway system will benefit the Seymour residents. It proves in the pudding. Even before COVID-nineteen hit us, there were no indications of planned improvements for the bus service in the Seymour area. This is not likely to happen anytime soon, if ever. Parking, four hundred and eighty-four resident parking stalls is very high and would assume and almost encourage that every unit will have more than one vehicle. I feel that the number of parking units should be reduced in order to attract more people with fewer cars. Isn't the purpose of this development to make it fossil-free? Adding that many vehicles to the road would hardly qualify as being fossil-free. Will all the residents really be driving fully electric vehicles? The issue of childcare or lack of childcare has been pointed out to me. As confirmed by the DMV's council liaison support officer in her response to council on December the second, there are no community plan provisions that would encourage a childcare facility as part of this development, and it is not part of the rezoning application. Since this development is supposed to be attractive for young families- Since this development is supposed to be attractive for young families, meaning that many young kids would be living at the Seymour Estates, we will know that this will mean that many parents will be driving in and out of the Seymour Estates to bring their kids to both school and childcare facilities. This should not be ignored, as this could mean a lot of added vehicle trip, trips during weekdays. Rental units. Although it is a step in the right direction that there will be fifty-six market rental units, twenty-five rent-to-own units and thirty-three below market rental units, I feel that for such an increase in density, council should really insist on more of these types of units. This is only one-third of the total, the rest being market housing. The percentage should be much higher than that in order to provide much-needed lower-cost housing in the D and V. Don't forget, council, that you are in the driver's seat. Phasing. Although it is good to hear that the whole project will not be built simultaneously, the slower redevelopment would have been appreciated. Too compact and number of buildings. I feel that fifteen buildings on this site will make it far too compact. Fewer buildings would enable the site to appear less busy and it would generate less traffic both internally and on the public roads. Height. I find that six stories is too much for Mount Seymour Parkway, which with one unfortunate exception, only has buildings of four floors in height, which was also recommended and stated in the Seymour local plan. I'm totally aware that the Seymour Estates was removed from the Sogul, from the Seymour local plan twenty-odd years ago. This was because already then, some of the residents of the Seymour Estates, which was barely thirty years old at the time, wanted to redevelop and cash in on the site. And the head of the D and V planning department in those days felt that it would be easier to have this done if the Seymour Estates was part of the pro-development neighborhood plan instead of the more slow-growth oriented Seymour local plan. On the positive side, I have to stress the last minute, the last minute change to a completely fossil-free development. This is most definitely a step in the right direction, and I hope that this will live up to its reputation if it proceeds in this fashion. Hopefully, other developers will take note of this shift. However, it does not take care of the fossil development by the vehicles that will be used by the new residents. Not all of them will be driving EVs. Am I supposed to stop here, Mayor Little?
We've just gone past five minutes. If you're gonna join us for a second time speaking, then I'll move on to the next speaker. That's all.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, thank you so much, Eric Anderson. Uh, next speaker I have is speaker number forty-three, Antoine Duke. Antoine Duke, can you hear me?
Your worship, um, Antoine Duke has not connected to the meeting at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Uh, next speaker I have, number forty-four is Eric Carlson. Eric Carlson, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Very clearly. You have uh, five minutes to address the hearing.
Great, thanks very much. So I'm Eric Carlson. I'm actually the owner and president of Anthem Properties as the applicant. And I'm not here to speak as a developer so much as I'm here to speak as a, as a citizen, lifelong citizen of the North Shore. Uh, I wanted to speak, speak about four things over the five minutes. We try to do as quickly, as efficiently as I can. I want to talk about sentiment for a time gone by. I want to talk about sustainability. I want to talk about rigid paradigms. I want to talk about solutions. So I go way back. My grandparents moved to Northland in nineteen twenty, came directly from Sweden. And they moved in and there was a lot of uh, people. There wasn't a lot of traffic. There wasn't a lot of congestion. But over the course of their lives, they experienced a great deal of that as the, as the, as district and the city grew. My mom and dad are lifetime Northland people. They went to Northland High, met, got married, had four kids of whom I was one. We all grew up in Northland. My dad, in fact, was an architect and for the last fifteen years his career was the chief building inspector of the district of Northland. I went to grades one through twelve in Northland and uh, went to North Star Elementary, Baymore Elementary, Bell Memorial Junior Secondary, Hansford Senior Secondary, where I met my wife Karen, who worked at the Peter Rabbit Grocery Reta in Edgemont Village. I had a great experience growing up. I, I played in uh, between soccer, Forest Hills Baseball, Capital Tennis, Cross Mountain Tice Ski Club, where actually I remember council Hanson was a Worcester Mountain guy and his dad, Mr. Hanson, uh, worked very hard, as did many Northland dads and moms on their kids' sports programs. To balance me out as a member of the Northland Youth Band, uh, for a lot of years playing the tuba, which I couldn't stand, but now really appreciate the music that my mother made me learn. That band was one of the best child orchestras in the world in nineteen sixty-seven, and I'm kind, this all has a point I'm coming up to in a minute. Uh, but mostly I like my life adventure of playing in the mountains, uh, a cross mountain. I hiked up there all the time with my buddies. Caught my first fish in Mosquito Creek. Loved the creeks, the trees, the moss, all of that. It was a full childhood. It was a rich, very rich experience. My entire family still lives here in the North Shore, getting to today. My two parents live in the retirement home in Edgemont Village. Thanks for having the foresight to allow that to project to go ahead so they could stay in the community they grew up in. My siblings live here, my nieces and nephews, my own two sons and my grand, my two grandchildren, Cole and Piper, live on Nicklum Court just off Apex, just off the parkway. I drive down that road twice a week to go see them. So I understand the traffic and the congestion issues everyone's talking about. We're all fortunate we could get to be here, beginning to today. It's just cost prohibitive to live in the district of North Vancouver. A next level house is one point three million dollars and it goes up from there. There's a lack of affordability. Uh, the, the consequences are we have fewer kids. We have families with much higher incomes. Uh, there's fewer children, so the sports leagues I talked about are all merged together to try to survive. Northland Youth Band has been permanently shut down for lack of enrollment. And the schools I went to, some of them were closed. North Star's closed, Bell Memorial's closed, Hamilton's closed, Northland High is closed and Delbruck High School is closed. In twenty nineteen, the last Halloween before COVID, the house I grew up in that had six kids in it, or six people, has two and four kids came by the house for Halloween. We used to get a hundred in my day. And it's really becoming a community of older, single people and couples living alone in big houses with big carbon footprints with no children in the neighborhood and a lack of uh, of, of, I'll call it sustainability, which is my next point. Uh, urban planning principles call for sustainability, which is about environment, social sustainability and economic sustainability. Environmental sustainability is about having lower carbon footprint in this era of climate change. Uh, fresh air, clean drinking water, pleasing design aesthetic. The social sustainability is about diversity, about having all kinds of people from all kinds of backgrounds living together. They can learn to be tolerant and understand each other, make the world a better place. Also helps keep schools open, the programs open that I found so valuable in my childhood. And economically, the more diversity you have, I think the more you can keep a, a strong community from a tax base point of view. But moving on, we have rigid paradigms and I understand that. Uh, there's a lot of anger in our society with all the change, the disruption from technology, global warming, globalization, polarization, and mostly in our community about affordability and trafficking congestion. And uh, it creates a kind of resentment and a no towards new development. But if we get locked into our no, we'll never deal with these other issues. And the community I love so much growing up won't be here. It'll just be a community full of people like me complaining about young people and the noise and the congestion. And environmentally, we relive in a lot of high-carbon, single-family homes and we lack the support for transit, we'll be people to take it. And uh, I think that the socially we'll just end up with a lot of, a lot more emptiness. So moving on to solutions, I like our proposed project. Now I'm speaking like a developer. I believe it honors the community and I knew that was gonna happen. I'll have to sign on later. But uh, I sent you up for, I guess, I'm a, I'm not just a developer who's coming in to rape and pillage the neighborhood. This is my home and I want to make it good for me, my friends, my community, my neighbors, my grandchildren. I'll come back and tell you why at the end of the public hearing.
I would encourage you to add your name to the list at input@dmv.org uh, when we do second time speakers. Uh, thank you, Eric Carlson. Uh, my next speaker is Brittany Stewart. Brittany Stewart, can you hear me?
Your worship, uh, Ms. Stewart has not connected to the meeting at this time.
Thank you very much. Corey Cost, speaker number forty-six. Can you hear me?
Hello, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Corey.
Very good.
The hearing, uh, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, I'd like to uh, share my screen here, uh, if possible. I'm not sure if you're gonna see things.
Not yet.
Your entire screen. Uh, well, let's see. I have to take on share, I guess. Watch the share your contents. Application window, Chrome tab. Wow, that wasn't easy. I don't know sure why it doesn't want to share the screen. Well, you already have my uh, present, presentation. So I will just quickly verbally go through the material. It's too bad that one cannot share uh, the uh, entire screen in the process.
Uh, try, try one more time because we've had a couple of speakers earlier in the evening that were able to do it, so uh.
Okay. Share, okay, I'll try this one.
Oh, there you go. That spawned it. There you go.
Okay, you're seeing my PDF uh, file here.
By Corey Cost at the top, so there.
Right, and uh, there's the preamble in front and the disclaimer of any uh, of community area interests, and I would like to go on to discuss the electric vehicle charging infrastructure that's being proposed by the developer. Um, and I think bottom line really is in this that the standards really for the lower mainland and I've attached the appropriate documentation on this is that um, level two, level two is what is dominant for a hundred percent of the plug-ins. That's the sort of standard. We're still living uh, in accordance to uh, standards that were adopted in twenty fourteen and are woefully inadequate and would be very costly, approximately eleven thousand dollars as indicated by the attached report to upgrade. Uh, so a developer, I think, would find wise uh, to put this in place. On a related issue, uh, the environmental and human uh, rights violations associated with the mining of these rare earths for electric vehicles, for example, um, particularly cobalt. Um, it should be noted that uh, come, large companies like Tesla, which are dominant, is the dominant company, is going to switch to uh, an alternate technology, not including the cobalt. And uh, and what they are going to use will be meet social and environmental standards. I, I do want to note that many countries are committing to phasing out the production and sale of new fossil fuel-based vehicles by twenty thirty and some as early as twenty forty. So I think it behooves council to support this endeavor to by providing appropriate electric vehicle charging capabilities in all new residential housing, including this one. As far as uh, parking is concerned, electric cars are gonna be with us for uh, in one form or another, so um, development should accommodate about one stall per unit and an extra one for the larger two-bedders or more uh, as units. So uh, people are afraid that maybe uh, uh, future parking surplus could result, but even if that's the case, it can be leased out to nearby buildings or tenants or repurposed for another purpose and hence will never be a lost asset. As far as the number of uh, district and Northland uh, registered vehicles, they're essentially on the upgrade, on the increase beyond uh, the increase in our uh, population. So clearly cars are not going to go away. Uh, the insurance company has reported, and I report on this page, uh, ICB number of registrations keeps going up and ours are substantially higher than the uh, adjacent city of North Vancouver. Uh, note that the statistics on this table there uh, accounts only for people and it's almost at one uh, per person, uh, because we count only those over the age of, of fifteen. Shadow studies. Time and time again, we find that shadows are an important element and their design, and the proper design of housing, especially if you're gonna have kids playing outdoors. Uh, and they should uh, encompass at least the six months, something in six-month period uh, from September twenty-first to March twenty-first. I suggest including December twenty-first to DC. Uh, but the clue there is to try and have uh, a play area, open area, which faces uh, clearly to the south. Parkland. We're gonna have three hundred and forty-one units, average, let's say two point three. Uh, people in there, that's about eight hundred people housed in this complex. And uh, we've always said that growth should pay for its own way, and on that basis, uh, a thousand people needs about ten acres of parkland, one way or another, and that conservatively uh, would cost forty million dollars if the district had to acquire some other way. How much is actually being paid? Uh, three point four million, not even ten percent of what should be paid just to, for the parkland requirement. So, no, this developer's not paying its own way. It's simply absconding the surplus existing uh, parkland in the area. So let's just admit that growth is, again, not paying its own way to describe. Pandemics and COVID nineteen. First, should be noted that these words appear nowhere in the proposal. A very significant uh, change, seismic changes take place. So, yes.
Have expired, uh, and.
I will carry on on my second opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next speaker I have is Judith Brooke. Speaker number forty-seven, Judith Brooke, can you hear me?
Yes, Mayor Little, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Great, yeah. The prior presentation is still being displayed.
Oh, uh, Dr. Cost, can you unshare your screen?
Thank you. All right, so um, thank you for this opportunity to, to speak to, to the council. Oh, nice color on my face. That's from the Christmas lights. I'm not really an alien. Um, so I, uh, my name is Judith Brooke. I live in Lynn Valley in uh, in the district of North Vancouver. Um, I'm uh, very appreciative of the rent-to-own approach in this project. We need to get more folks into the market and um, this is, this is one way of doing that. I want to show my appreciation of the commitment of the developers to a fossil fuel-free project. This is very good news for the climate and um, uh, I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. Um, I just want to, to make a point here that uh, if electric baseboards are used, this causes a high cost to the unit residents. And for this reason, um, I support the and promote the use of heat pumps for both uh, the space heating and district and uh, the domestic hot water. Uh, it, heat pumps are much more effective, three hundred to four hundred percent more effective than baseboards. I'm also in favor of uh, rufton conduits uh, for solar panels. Uh, that's always a, a, a good setup to do when you're planning the building rather than retrofit later. Uh, I would like to say that I, I do agree with um, several folks who've mentioned um, the need for more non-market housing. Eric Anderson, who spoke just a few uh, speakers ago, uh, mentioned this and um, uh, I'm using the uh, the figures that Peter Teigen showed, the submarket rent of thirty-three units and the rent to own of twenty-five. Um, these seem to be very, very low numbers out of a total of three hundred and forty-one. And um, we're, we're all quite cognizant of, of the extreme non-affordability in, in the district and the North Shore in general, and I think, I believe that we need to make more of an effort here to get people into, into housing that they can afford and not just outright have to buy. Um, so I would, if, if at all possible, like to see more of the submarket rent and the uh, potential rent to own. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Judith Burke. My next speaker is uh, speaker number forty-eight. This is Lori Parkinson. Lori Parkinson, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, and here I am.
You're, you're coming in very, very soft. Nice and loud.
Yeah, how was that? Can you hear me?
Look better? Okay, uh, we have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council for this opportunity to speak. I live near Moodyville and have done so for over twenty-five years. I'm in favor of this development because of Anthem's actions to fight climate change. Uh, this development will be fossil fuel-free for both space heating and domestic hot water. And I want to commend Anthem for being a real environmental leader on this. Uh, the first subject I wanted to cover briefly is to do with heat pumps. Um, I encourage these developers to use. I encourage these developers to use heat pumps for both space heat and domestic hot water. Heat pumps are much, much more efficient than electric resistance heat. And so it's better use of our hydro power. And the electric bills for residents will be three times lower with heat pumps. These folks are having a hard time buying or living in, simply living, affording, living in most spaces in Metro Vancouver and electric resistance heat will just make life more difficult for them financially. Heat pumps are quite practical to use now. Not long ago, if you had a heat pump, you needed a backup gas furnace when temperatures got below five Celsius outside. But modern heat pumps were just fine to minus 25 Celsius outside, which North Vancouver doesn't ever achieve. No gas up for, no backup gas furnace is needed. So the heat pumps are really changing, advancing technology. I wanted to expand a little bit on what Judith said to do with wiring or preparing for wiring for solar panels because I think it may be terminology people aren't too familiar with. When solar panels are, are put in, there has to be wiring that goes from the solar panels on the roof down through the building. And this, the wires aren't just put there into the building, they're put into pipes, little skinny pipes called conduits. If the conduits are put in when the building is built, it's ever so much simpler. Retrofitting in conduits would be an enormous pain. And solar panels really are the future of power. Electricity from solar panels is becoming much, much cheaper compared to BC Hydro's power. So I hope conduits for future solar panels will be included in this building. In conclusion, the District of North Vancouver has declared a climate emergency as many intelligent municipalities have. We have an urgent situation. Our present extreme weather is from carbon pollution emitted 40 years ago. The carbon pollution we are emitting now, we will feel the effects of 40 years from now. So things are only going to get worse. Let's help Anthem move forward with the fossil fuel development, fossil fuel free development that they are planning. We need to make all our decisions these days through a climate lens. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori Parkinson. Next speaker is Stephen Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor Little, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much. My name is Stephen Peterson. I live at 1145 29th Street East in Lynn Valley. I've lived here with my family for over 11 years, just with my wife and son and with my parents. And I'm a, I'm a registered professional community planner with over 20 years' experience in the planning and development field. I'm talking today in favor of the development. We desperately need housing in well-served neighborhoods. This site has a history of multifamily use. It's also located near Ron Andrews Community Center, Windsor School, the Seymour Youth Center, and Canlan Ice Sports. As far as I'm concerned, this is exactly where you need to be putting some, some multifamily units. It's also adjacent to a transit corridor and I think development at this density will help to support and perhaps expand the use of transit in the area. I've been interested in affordable and social housing for a long, long time. Before I was a planner, I supported handicapped people living in their own home in the community and I grew acutely aware of how important housing is for the vulnerable members of our community and how difficult it is for many of them to, to find appropriate housing. I applaud Anthem for proposing to include rent to own units as part of their project. I think this is going to make a tremendous, tremendous difference in the households who are able to have access to these units. I think we have many people in our community who are renting today, who would like to own, who are, who have good jobs and but find it very challenging to save for a down payment. And rent to own provides them a pathway to homeownership as well as, it also eases the demand for rental units, increase them up for, for other people who'd like to rent them. I'd also like to applaud Anthem for working with Hollyburn Family Services to provide below market rent. I think by including rent to own and below market rental within a market development, I think this is extremely progressive. I think this is a, it's an opportunity to provide these units to people without large government subsidies. I think that this sort of thing should be encouraged and I exhort the district to consider incentivizing such programs to be included in future multifamily developments. I also think a project like this is really important due to its timing. As, as we all know, we've, our economy has been devastated by the COVID pandemic. And this represents an opportunity for people to invest in our community and to create jobs and keep families working during a very, very difficult time. Now, I just provided some intellectual arguments, but on a personal note, the housing crisis, it drives families apart. You know, my own brother-in-law, his wife and his children used to live in my neighborhood and they had to move away because they were no longer able to afford it. And, you know, my brother-in-law, he's an entrepreneur. He does very well. You know, his wife, she's also very productive in her work life. It's not like these are people who are looking for handouts, yet they were unable to afford to live in our community. And this is a real shame. So I encourage council to continue to look for opportunities to include rent to own and affordable housing within the framework of larger development projects because this is a way that we can provide these units without large government subsidies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Stephen Peterson. Next speaker is Mackenzie Forge. Kenzie Forge, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Little and Council. My name is Mackenzie Forge and I am speaking tonight in favor of the bylaw amendment for Anthem Seymour Estate Development. I live on Violet Street, which is less than two blocks from the subject property and will be directly affected by it, which is why I felt it was important that I speak at this public hearing. I grew up with my family in Blue Ridge and have the best memories of block parties and tons of young families with kids my age. And of course Halloween, which was probably my favorite day of the year as a kid. The streets were filled with families and our house would get upwards of 200 kids each year without fail. I always dreamt of moving back to Blue Ridge one day and in the summer of 2019, my husband and I were fortunate enough to make that happen. We were pregnant with our first child and I couldn't wait to settle into the neighborhood and meet all the families. We met our lovely neighbors and quickly learned that most of them have been here for 40 plus years. And there was only one other family on our entire street with young kids. I'll never forget the day after we moved in, the 10-year-old next door came up to me and asked if we had kids since he and his sister were the only kids on the whole block. Come Halloween, I couldn't wait to give out candy to all the little ones. It was our first time in a single-family home and I'd been dreaming about this. And we had six trick-or-treaters and this was pre-COVID. What I'm trying to get at is that there aren't a lot of families with young children in the Blue Ridge community. And I strongly feel that this will change for the better if this bylaw is amended and Seymour Estates is built. My husband and I have a lot of friends who want to move to North Vancouver, specifically this neighborhood, but a single-family home is out of their budget. The housing diversity that Anthem's development will offer would allow this demographic the ability to get into the market and live in the Blue Ridge community. If we don't start making changes to affordability and housing diversity, I'm concerned that schools may start to close because there won't be enough enrollment because there aren't enough young families in our community. Another thing I wanted to mention was in response to some of the comments concerning the increase in traffic. Any development is going to see an increase in traffic. We all know that. But I think Anthem's done a great job with providing alternatives to driving. I still know a lot of people will rely on cars. As someone who commutes to downtown during the rush hour, I know that the parkway can get busy, especially onto the highway and the bridge. But the current road construction around the highway interchanges in our area are going to make a significant improvement for the flow of traffic. And the road, and that road construction will be long completed once Seymour Estates is built. With all that being said, I urge Mayor and Council to listen to the public and approve this bylaw amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie Forge. Next speaker is Lynn Slade. Lynn Slade, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and councils for the job you do. I know it's a very difficult one, especially with that, when you have an issue, an issue to deal with, when there are strong advocates on both sides of it. However, after hearing most of the speakers tonight, I know my comments, excuse me, are in the minority. I love living in the Mount Seymour area. However, I do not support the location for this project, but I do support social housing. I tend to support council, council person, Mura's, Mura's idea to swap some DMV land so we can use the Seymour Estates land for a new rec center and then develop social housing on the current site of the rec center or closer to town centers. If it is used for a rec center, all the sporting activities will be somewhat centralized, much like it is right now. This will really cause traffic issues for people going to the current rec center and sporting fields. Then there's the traffic issue. We're beginning to see a significant increase in the new construction, which has led to dramatic increases in traffic. There are new apartments under construction on the parkway and more approved in the same area. Another major concern, and I stress major concern, is the opening of the Ravenwoods area to the parkway. Ravenwoods is like a small city and this will add a tremendous amount of new traffic to the parkway, which I don't think has been mentioned in any way at any time during tonight's meeting. If the Liston Street project proceeds, it'll add another 484 parking spots proposed, which again will add more traffic. I know that the social housing issue is more important than the traffic issue to a lot of people. But I haven't heard anything with regards to how we can deal with all of this. Also, when the innovation project is completed down on the Maplewood area, there's going to be a road coming up to the parkway at Berkeley. So now we're going to have Berkeley as a major congestion center from everything from Deep Cove, Indian River, Mount Seymour area and the Berkeley area. I don't know if there's any answers to it. I, I hope that someone could explain it to me with all this increased traffic and again, especially from the Ravenwoods area. I also have a comment to make from a previous speaker about downsizing and wonder if council has given any consideration to the issues that we face in apartments and townhouses today. I live at a townhouse. Our insurance rates are going through the roof. You may be able to build these places, but are people going to be able to afford the insurance to live there? For example, in the last five years, our insurance in our townhouse has gone from $50,000 in our complex to $120,000. And it doesn't seem like it's going to stop. I'm just presenting questions for council to consider. Basically, that's it. Again, thank you, council people, for the work you do. I just hope you take some of these other things into consideration, maybe address them and hopefully maybe implement some of them. I wish you Merry Christmas and keep safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn Slade. Our next speaker is Catherine Fagerland, speaker number 52. Catherine, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thanks very much. Like Mr. Slade, I would like to thank council for all your hard work and for your time tonight, especially second time around. And also like Mr. Slade, I'm going to be speaking in the minority. I'm not in favor of this development. I, I'm, I've listened to all of the different people who've spoken. I have a huge amount of sympathy for, for the affordability issue. I just don't think this is the answer to the affordability issue. This, like as Mr. Anderson said, this should have been part of the Seymour local plan, not part of the Maplewood plan. It's not, it's not near a town center. It's not one of the OCP designated town centers. It's really dense for a corner of a relatively not dense area. We have got, we've got quite a few townhouses coming along. But, and especially down the Maplewood area. But this is like a sick, I'm just picturing a six-story on that corner and another six-story right across the street from, from Windsor, from Windsor Secondary and I, I'm, I shake my head. Okay. We, many people are talking about, okay, the other thing is sustainability. We've talked a lot about traffic. There's going to be 576 parking spots or, or more than that in terms of number of cars. It's not near a town center. It is on a transit corridor, but people who can afford these stratas and they won't be cheap would probably be driving cars. I mean, think about coming home with groceries from, even from as close a superstore. I kind of think I would be probably climbing into my car. I had another, the other thing is, they say it's going to be, people have said, it's going to be built to step three and people are applauding them for that. Council just passed a bylaw that comes into effect next summer and by, so by the time this probably, I don't know for sure what their timing is, but I would expect that by the time they go for building permit, that would be so close to being a mandate anyway, that it's not really a gift. I have a huge amount of concern. I live in Deep Cove and we're about to have to dig up Gallant Avenue because of runoff. Some have, nobody says it for sure, but it would appear that it's because of development. I'm looking at the amount of concrete that's going into the ground here and the size of this 6.8 acres and thinking, what's the drainage going to be coming down towards Windsor School? Is Windsor School's basement going to flood? Have, has, has the development? There's nothing in, that I can see in the report to council that addresses those concerns. One more thing or a couple more things. There's a lot of people talking about this being family housing, but there's only, as Rob Haynes, I think, in one of his letters said, there's only 2,000 square feet of open space on 6.28 acres. I'm thinking, there is quite a bit of parkland around. There is a rec center and whatnot, but I'm thinking of me. My daughter's now 30, but when she was growing up, that's not a heck of a lot of play, space for, for, for me to watch over her while I'm trying to get other things done. It's, it's like it's, there's, there's no kids playing in the neighborhood here. It's too, there's not enough outdoor space. There's no place for them to throw badminton bat, or badminton bird back and forth towards each other. I'm not suggesting anything harder than that because it breaks windows. But, or, or to play a game, even to play a game of tag, it looks a little tight to me for that. And then finally, I'd like to speak to the affordability issue. As I said in one of my previous comments, these are not going to be affordable strata units. These are going to be, there's, out of 341, only 10% of them are, are non-market. I don't think that's high enough. I think we need more. And there's, there's an enormous, there's an enormous value in uplift. The developer here is going to make a handsome profit unless the market fails and I don't think that's about to happen. And I don't, I just don't think we're asking for enough in return for that uplift and, and that, that benefit. Yes, there's going to be $6 million, $3 million in DCCs and $3 million in CACs, but that's like a pittance compared to what the profit margin is on this.
That's what I'm going to ask you to draw to a close.
Yeah, and that's it. So basically, the, one other thing I, point I'd like to make is the rent to own is really not clearly defined. And I've read some, some not so positive stuff about rent to own and I'd like to know a little bit more about that. Thanks very much. Thanks for your time. Bye.
Very much. Our last speaker on the first time original speakers list is Mauro Chiesa. Mauro Chiesa, can you hear me? Ms. Clark, do we have Mauro Chiesa on the line?
Yes, she's there.
Yes, I'm just checking again the participants. One moment, please. Yes, they are in the meeting, so they should be able to.
Mauro, Mauro Chiesa, can you hear me? Might have just stepped away. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to circle back and pick up the, the people.
I'm here.
Oh, welcome.
Yes. I don't know. I didn't touch anything, but all of a sudden I'm heard. Can I be seen?
You can be heard. I can hear you. I can't at the moment see you.
What do I, what do I press to be seen?
Typically, bottom left corner should say start video. Oh.
There we are.
Okay.
Allow me to introduce myself. I went into Argyle High School. Then I did two degrees at UBC and then I moved to New York City and then Washington DC. And I worked primarily with infrastructure finance. and I worked primarily with infrastructure finance. With Washington, D.C., I was with the World Bank. And believe me or not, 100 years ago, we were about a billion on this planet, and now we're 8 billion. So if you're looking for affordable land, it's not going to happen anytime soon. There's just simply no more land, and there's eight times the people in about 100 years. I've already sent some comments along on the project, against the project, not against affordability, not against, you know, any of the qualities of this project, but strongly suggesting that the project be moved to a more convenient site. What are the more convenient sites? It could be Park Gate, it could be Dollerton, or it could be, you know, any shopping center. And Lynn Valley is a good example. Edgemont Village is another example. You've got to integrate more of the service, shopping, and medical facilities into the living, so people don't have to drive as much to go to these services. Right now, the project is neither here nor there. It's 1.7 kilometers from, from Northwoods, and it's, what, 2.5 kilometers from Park Gate. There will be driving galore, because of course there isn't enough busing. Second point is the parking. You've got to go vertical on parking. It's got to go underground so that you can free up the surface area for more habitation and playgrounds. There's still too much surface parking in North Vancouver. And once again, these are from the times, times past, but we all remember growing up in Lynn Valley and in great places where there was space galore. Well, there's no more space galore. North Van District is but an island. You've got ocean on one side, you've got mountain on the other, and you've got North Van City on the third. Last but not least, you've got marginalized to worry about. Right now, you've just got 10, just a shade below 10% for the marginalized. That's not enough. Just look at the Statscan numbers for North Van District. You are simply, you know, you should have like 15 to 20% for the marginalized if you want the seniors and if you want the single parents to call North Vancouver home. Last but not least is the banana rule. Banana stands for build absolutely nothing, absolutely nowhere near anything. And this project unfortunately breaks that rule. You are, again, 1.7 kilometers from one shopping center, 2.5 from another, and the district is just going to have to build more infrastructure. So once again, move the project to the shopping centers. Last but not least, how do I say this? Look, Canada has just signed a Paris Accord. Okay, B C's part of that, and you're part of that. Why come up with a housing project that's going to maximize car use rather than minimize? It's going to be less pollution. It's going to be less congestion costs. It's going to be less stress on emergency services, because with fewer cars, you have fewer accidents. It's just going to be less breathing problems for the seniors. And right now, you're adding to it rather than subtracting to it. And I think I better stop there. These are just the fundamental points that I think that the district has to start looking at in an integrated fashion, rather than just the development per se. Because the development per se is yesteryear. That was when, when land was ample and prices were cheap, and you were just happy to get development in. Now you have to make every square meter count. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mauro Chiesa. At this point, council, I just wanted to state a couple of things that are going to take place at this time. First, I'm going to, I'm going to, there we go. We have the clerk has placed the call-in phone number and meeting ID up onto the screen. I'm now going to go back over the first-time original speakers list, and I'm going to just check in with people who might have missed their times, just simply because if you expected to be speaker number 40, and we started out right away and, and, and you missed your time, then we'll just give you a second time to, to check in. So I am going to go through those names again. After that point, I will consider that we have exhausted the first-time speakers. I'm going to put a break in the meeting there so that we have an opportunity for council to send their last questions through to Michael Hartford from our staff, and then we'll come back and hear from Michael his, his responses to the questions from council. After that point, we'll resume second-time speakers, and we've already produced a list of people that are calling in or sending their email to input@dnv.org. Again, if you want to add your name as a second-time speaker to that list, just send it to input@dnv.org, and we'll add it to the list. But we're not going to end the night until we've exhausted the speakers list, or end the hearing until we've exhausted the speakers list. So at this point, I'm just going to read back through the names of the people that we skipped earlier on in the evening, just to see if they're still on. I'll probably just ask the clerk to come online here to check these, so we can go through them rather quickly. Madam Clerk, do you have Mohamed Jamil or Mohamed Jamil? Can you hear me?
Your worship, Mr. Jamil has not joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. And I, I expect this is probably going to be the case for most of them, but I think it'd be still best to go through the names anyway. Patrick Stafford Smith, have you joined the meeting?
Your worship, Mr. Stafford Smith has withdrawn his speaking.
Okay, thank you very much. Louisa Bridgman, are you able to join the meeting?
Ms. Bridgman has not joined the meeting.
Thank you very much. Leslie Grigg, have you joined the meeting?
Ms. Grigg has not joined the meeting.
Thank you. Jackie Coulter, have you been able to join the meeting?
Ms. Coulter has not joined the meeting.
Thank you. Chantal Taylor, have you been able to join the meeting?
Ms. Taylor has not joined the meeting.
David Seaword, have you been able to join the meeting?
Mr. Seaword has not joined the meeting.
Thank you. Just a few more. Sarah Higerty, have you been able to join the meeting?
Ms. Higerty has not joined the meeting.
Thank you. Antoine Duke, have you been able to join the meeting?
Mr. Duke has not joined the meeting.
Thank you. Brittany Stewart, have you been able to join the meeting?
Ms. Stewart has not joined the meeting.
Thank you. And that's all I have for people who are missed out of the first-time original list. And so now we're going to go to first-time people who have come through on the phone system or since we flashed the list up on the screen there. Ms. Lance, I saw a couple of people, we're in the waiting room there. Do you have names for us, or?
I guess we have an Emily Vinnet. Last three digits, the phone number 173 is a first-time caller.
We'll go to Emily Vinnet, and then we'll just see if anyone else joins after that point. Emily Vinnet, are you able to hear me? Try that again. Emily Vinnet, are you able to hear me? Should I try now?
Oh, there she is. I see that the caller is in the meeting.
Emily Vinnet, are you able to hear me?
They are unneeded.
Hello?
Hi, is this Emily Vinnet?
Yes, speaking.
Yes, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Wonderful. Sorry about the technological difficulties.
If you could turn down your other speaker, it might come through a little bit clearer.
Perfect. We'll give this a go.
Thank you so much.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Emily Vinnet, as you know by now, and I'm calling tonight to offer a few comments in support of this application. I know you've received a number of comments already in support. It was great to hear the outpouring of support for this project from my community, so I'll keep this brief. I grew up in North Vancouver and was lucky enough to have been able to purchase a home here, which is currently under construction. In the meantime, my parents have been kind enough to let my husband and I stay with them here in North Van. I believe this project offers the right mix of housing. There's a lot of couples like my husband and I who grew up here and want to stay here and can't afford it, and really could stand to benefit from the apartments, townhomes, and condos, and in particular, the rent-to-own homes that are being proposed at Seymour Estates. I have no doubt that the rent-to-homes will be incredibly popular. I think the proposal for Seymour Estates, although relatively modest in my opinion, will help address the rising rents, the lowering vacancy rates, and affordability challenges that we have heard so much about tonight. I also think this proposal represents a much better use than the empty lot that exists today. With this project, there's an opportunity to build better housing choices for the people who want to live there in a desirable location near transit, recreation, green spaces, and schools, all within walking distance. For these reasons, I'm encouraging you to support this application, which will bring over 300 new homes to North Vancouver to suit people at different stages of life, from young couples and families to downsizers. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
You, Emily Vinnet?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Clerk, do we have any other call-in speakers at this time?
Yes, we do, your worship. We have Rhonda Spence, caller with the last three digits, 033.
I missed the last name. Rhonda?
Spence.
Spence?
Hello?
Rhonda Spence, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much. I did write a letter earlier before the first part of the hearing a month ago, but I thought I should follow up with a few more comments. I'm a born and raised North Vancouverite and now entering my senior years and have seen, obviously, as many speakers have said, a lot of changes on the North Shore. I want to add some very strong support for this proposal. I think that the biggest challenge that's facing us here on the North Shore and in the district is affordability, and affordability for younger families and for seniors and people of low income. One of the things about this development that I really, really like is its diversity. It has a lot of parts to it and parts that address many things that we're trying to do. And I think things that this council ran on and set out as one of their main things was to increase, increase affordable housing in the district. I'm particularly taken with the partnership with Hollyburn Family Services for the below-market rent housing and the option for the rent to own. I think that is a great opportunity for young people. But what I wanted to add to this conversation, having listened to the presentations last time that I could hear, and, and tonight, is the whole issue of balance and the whole issue around, there is no perfect solution, but what is being offered here is a real start and a real opportunity. And especially for the district council to take some strong leadership in terms of how to make positive change in the district, in terms of housing, in terms of community growth. I think that, you know, there were a lot of arguments and statements about issues around parking or heating or climate change, and all of these are so significant, but there is no perfect answer. And I think what we're getting at here is a really, really good start. And I think that this is your opportunity, mayor and council, to show leadership that has been demanded by the, the citizens of the district for quite some time now, to, to bring forward some new innovative, creative proposals that will begin to address the problems that we have here. Thanks very much for your time, and I, I hope that you approve this, this proposal.
Thank you, Rhonda Spence.
Good night.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, do you have another caller for us?
There are no other callers at this time.
So is it fair to say that first-time speakers, we've exhausted the list of first-time speakers?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so what I'm going to do now is I'm just going to take a, a three-minute break. Just, council, get your, any first-round questions that you may have through to staff of a clarifying nature. And then when we return after three minutes, then I'll go to Mr. Hartford for responses, and then we will move on to the second-time speakers. So thank you very much. We'll just have a quick three-minute break. I could just have councillors all turn on their video just for a moment, so I can just confirm quorum. Okay, there I see quorum. Councillor's back, Hanson and Bond at least, and councillor Curran as well. Thank you. So we'll, we'll resume the hearing at this point. I'm going to go to Mr. Hartford. Do you have questions that have been submitted by council, and do you have responses to those questions?
I do have some questions that have been submitted, your worship, and I can provide some answers for those. If you'd like me to start now?
Please.
First question is, are there graphs or spreadsheets showing the monthly cost difference between home units and the normal rent for the same-sized unit? And the answer, which has included some information from the applicant, current market rent for an average new one-bedroom apartment in North Vancouver is about current market rent for an average new one bedroom apartment in North Vancouver is about $1,650 per month. If a resident lives in a one bedroom market rental unit at $1,650 per month, they would pay the monthly rent plus approximately $100 per month for parking if they needed it, for a total of $1,750 per month. If a resident lives in an equivalent one bedroom rent to own unit, they would pay the same $1,650 per month, plus approximately $225 for strata fees and approximately $170 in property taxes for a total of $2,045 per month. As the rent to own unit would include a parking space, there would be no additional charge for parking. At the end of the 24 month rent to own period, the rent payment of $1,650 per month would be returned to the rent to own occupant for a total of $39,600 to be applied toward the down payment to complete the purchase of the unit. Second question is also related to the rent to own program. And the question is, the rent to own benefit is quite significant. How will rent to own applicants be selected? And the answer, the district will be taking a section 219 covenant to secure the rent to own program in relation to the 25 rent to own units. The covenant will stipulate a fair system, such as a lottery system, for accepting and approving applicants. The covenant will stipulate that purchasers selected for the rent to own program must be arms length from the developer. The covenant will also stipulate other eligibility requirements, such as being a first time home buyer, having ties to the North Shore, satisfying income testing and the declaration of their inability to provide a standard down payment. Next question was around the district's electric vehicle charging policy with a notation that it's outdated and currently under review. Could staff please confirm the applicant's approach to electric vehicle charging in the project? The project is divided into four sites. Three of the sites, sites one, two and four, have underground parking garages. The applicant is proposing to exceed the district's current EV charging policy to provide 25% level two charging with conduit in place to allow for 100% of the underground parking spaces to be converted in future to level two charging. Site three of the project is the townhouse units with individual garages. And those parking spaces would provide for 100% level one charging in all of those parking spaces. Next question is, can staff please clarify what is required or proposed for solar and solar ready? For multifamily development in the district, there is no requirement for solar installations or solar readiness. There is a requirement in single family construction for solar hot water heating as a future option for those buildings. In terms of what the applicant is proposing, my understanding is that there is no solar component to their mechanical system. The applicant may wish to clarify that and we have another follow up question for the applicant. So I would ask them to hold off on a comment for now. The final question that we have from council is that childcare has emerged as an urgent issue. Can staff please comment on any plans to expand childcare in the Seymour area that coincide with the estimated completion of this project? Is the applicant open to creating childcare onsite by converting some residential space into childcare, given the recently identified acute shortage? And for that question, I will ask for Mr. Veers' comment and a follow up comment from the applicant. Mr. Veers?
Your worship, through to Michael Hartford. I'm not aware of any plans at this moment to expand childcare in the immediate area to coincide with the estimated completion of this project. However, the district recently approved the childcare action plan. And that plan identifies this site as being located within the boundaries of the Maplewood area. And the Maplewood area is seen to be generally well served for group childcare. However, the Seymour area, which is just right next door to the site, is not so well served. And according to the district's inventory, there are approximately nine childcare programs with which provide 144 spaces within 400 meters of the site. And these are both group and family childcare programs. In addition, the childcare action plan also includes a number of actions aimed at increasing the provision of childcare in higher need areas such as Seymour through exploring opportunities to further leverage district owned lands and facilities to support nonprofit childcare and also continuing to work with partners such as the school district and the North Vancouver Recreation Commission to facilitate childcare on their lands or in their facilities, such as Ron Andrews, for instance, in a future redevelopment of that site. And as Michael Hartford commented, I can't speak for the developer on whether childcare would be incorporated, but the applicant may wish to comment on this issue. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll go to Ryan DeVeere. Can you comment on solar capability and also on childcare availability within the area?
Good evening, Mayor. Yes, thank you. In terms of solar readiness, yes, we are actually planning to provide future proofing for solar panels on the roofs of both site one and site four, that is the two six story buildings, to allow a retrofit in the future of solar panels, should it become viable to do so. It's not something that we've discussed with staff previously. It's just something that we have been doing in projects recently as an internal standard. So that will clarify that, but would you like me to respond to the childcare question as well?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so in terms of daycare provisions, it's never been a requirement from the district or indeed a request from the district for us to include any daycare spaces on this site. However, we did look at it carefully because it has been something that has come up on occasion in our consultations with members of the community. The site has some constraints, though. We have some pretty significant trees on the site that we are working very hard to retain, which are mature trees, which has a fairly large shadow footprint on the site. And there's definitely some constraints in terms of providing outdoor sunny space for public daycare usage. There is, of course, the option of trying to do private daycare in commercial space. But in our discussions with Mr. Eric Anderson over the last few years, he has been lobbying us very strongly to include a coffee shop on the site. And our choice was really between providing a coffee shop or a daycare space. And it has landed on a coffee shop and partially because of the fact that there are two daycares directly adjacent to the site. There's Huckleberries and then is the Seymour Heights Preschool. Huckleberries is actually currently in the process of expanding. And Seymour Heights Preschool would love to expand and have in fact approached us about the possibility of having some of the $3.4 million in cash that we will be paying to the district assigned to them for that expansion. And I think this would be a great usage of that community amenity contribution that we are making. And a good solution for some of the local daycares that is looking for some assistance from the district to expand.
Thank you for your response. Mr. Hartford, do you have more questions to address?
We do have a couple more questions, your worship. One of them is a question that I will ask Mr. Veers to respond. And that is, how many of the below market units are fully accessible?
Your worship, through to Mr. Hartford. So of the 33 below market rental units, four of these units are fully accessible at the enhanced level, two of which are one bedrooms and two of which are two bedrooms. Thank you.
Your worship, moving on to the next question. Could staff please comment on outdoor space amenities? Will there be play equipment and is that available for all residents, i.e. renters and owners? And yes, there is a playground proposed in the project. It will include play equipment elements. And that playground is available to all residents of the development, both renters and owners. Next question, could staff please address the concerns raised about flooding from the large displacement of earth to poor concrete parking structures? Staff are not aware of any specific flood risk in this area or issues that would be associated with the construction of the underground parking garages. The project would be required to resolve a stormwater management plan in accordance with the district bylaws. And that would be approved prior to issuance of the building permit for the project. A related question was that an updated integrated stormwater management plan is in progress by the district. Could staff please comment on stormwater management for this particular proposal? And if it will be subject to updated policies? I would not anticipate that it would be subject to updated policies because we have not adopted a new policy at this point. But as I mentioned, a stormwater management plan is required for the project to ensure that it complies with the development servicing bylaw and that it manages storm runoff onsite without creating increased load on the district storm system. And that concludes the questions that I have from council at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hartford. Once again, council, once we go through the second time speakers, I will check again with staff. So if you have any further questions, please send them to Mr. Hartford. At this time, perhaps I can have the clerk put the second time speakers list up. I believe the first person on the second time speakers list is Rob Haynes. Rob Haynes, can you hear me?
Yes, Mayor Little, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You're welcome to address the hearing for a second five minute period.
Great, thank you very much, everybody. And it's been an interesting evening. Thank you for your patience and everything that you're doing here. I'll continue on from before where I was talking about issues that, as I started to talk about, issues regarding the official city plan and the Maplewood Town Centre Plan. Mr. DeVeere's just mentioned that the developers were not required to look at things such as or required to put in things such as childcare spaces within the developments themselves. But that is clearly stated within the Maplewood Town Centre Plan. And if the Seymour Estates site has been included as a portion of the Maplewood Town Centre Plan, then all aspects of the development should follow under the guidelines of the Maplewood Town Centre Plan. And clearly, the development does not. While I applaud the developer on trying to make it carbon neutral and all those other features that they're putting into the building, the point remains, there was supposed to be co-employment. There was supposed to be childcare spaces. There were supposed to be senior livings or at least those types of community things. When other speakers have spoken about downsizing to seniors living and things like that, this development just doesn't do that. I do want to talk about the 2,000 square feet of green space. 2,000 square feet on a 6.2 acre site seems a little bit low for a development that will have around 900 people living into it or up to 900 people into it. I know it depends on where you want to go. If you're doing a 2.3 multiplier, then you're looking at 800 people. But 800, 900, somewhere in that number there. 2,000 square feet is the equivalent of five two car garages. Does anyone think that the number of children that are going to live there, the number of people that maybe want to go outside? Do people really think 2,000 square feet is enough? My house has 2,000 square feet of grass. I don't see how 800 people can enjoy that kind of square footage. And yes, I know there's parks around us, but if you just want to let your kid run outside nice and quick, get some fresh air, or you want to go outside with your dog, that's not enough for that number of people that are going to be sitting there. I do want to go back to childcare spaces briefly. Sending that money towards expansions of childcare, that's a nice idea. But the fact remains, that's not a guarantee. That's not really been put in place by the developer. So we can't really say it's a part of the development. It's not even in a proposal. So it's really a moot point where the developer is concerned on that particular note. We're going to have a large number of children that are going to live here. And if the closest spaces are not within those four blocks, people are going to be driving to them. And which gets us back to the old idea of the cars that are going on here. The pollution from vehicles themselves is a major component of why we have these greenhouse gas emissions. And the more cars that are sitting in traffic, the longer car idles, the more pollution it emits. And this development, it's built around cars. It's built around cars. There's no way around it. If you already purchased a vehicle, why would you then take the bus? So whether or not we increase the bus transportation system there or not, people already have to have a car. If you, once you move into this neighborhood, you're going to realize you have a car. And it's very nice for the developer to say that they will give three months subsidy of 50% for a bus pass. But within three months, you're going to know you need a car to live here. And I want to comment too about the idea of making an agreement with Moto. So Moto is going to be very lovely and have three cars there for three years subsidized. Well, there's a reason Car2Go has pulled up stakes in most places in North America because car sharing in that capacity doesn't really work anymore. The whole business model of Moto, Evo, all those other ones is to be in urban centers with high population where people don't need a car to do their day to day business. That is not Seymour. You need a car to do your day to day business. And that's going to include driving your kid to a childcare center that could be a kilometer away from your house. You're going to sit in traffic, your kid's going to have to get up earlier in the morning, less rest. All these things are going to go on because the development just does not meet the needs. No one is suggesting that these idealistic issues of the development having good ideas towards below market rentals, no one's saying that that's a bad idea. The problem is, this development is in the wrong spot to make those things come true. By the time this unit comes online, what's the townhouse going to cost? $1.5 million? That's not affordable housing. How is that affordable to anybody? So these are not really solutions here. This is a shiny disco ball. All these things that we're putting out here, they're not really getting to the crux of the position. They're not solving the problems. Would it be nice to have Habitat for Humanity? Sure. But what are they going to do? There's no job here. If they can't afford a vehicle because they're in Habitat for Humanity, they're going to take that bus. Okay, where are they going to get a job? Now they're having to spend money to go to a job that's nowhere near where they live. It's just the wrong development in the wrong spot. It doesn't meet the criteria.
Mr. Haynes, may I have you draw to a close?
Okay, so for a quarter of a billion dollars, they're asking awful lot from us and they're not really providing enough to us. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Next up, I have Eric Anderson speaking a second time.
Mayor Little, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. So I'll continue my presentation from before. I would like to point out that I had a good and very productive dialogue with Anthem. We did pay attention to the request that I made to include a coffee shop in this development. I did have a number of meetings with Anthem about this and I'm happy that they did listen to the community's wish for this addition. Not just do I think that this is a good way for new residents to get to know each other and bond, but I do not think that two coffee shops so close to each other as the one at the Seymour Estates and the new United Strangers Coffee across the street will be detrimental to each other. In fact, when you consider how many other coffee shops are close to each other and still do well, I think a little bit of variety in the area may actually bring in even more customers for both cafes. Nobody has been talking about the elephant in the room. Some of you may even ask what it is. I'm referring here to the almost done deal by the federal government, which will be giving large tracts of land to the local First Nations in Seymour as land settlement. I'm not arguing the settlement per se, but what everyone should realize that this will mean is that the control of this land, be it in Maplewood and/or on the current CMHC lands north of Mount Timor Parkway, will no longer be under the jurisdiction of the District of North Vancouver. First Nations are not required to do any public consultation prior to developments on their own lands. What public consultation has there, for example, been about the Raven Woods development in Seymour? Why should we expect this to be different when, not if, this land comes under the jurisdiction of our local First Nations? This has the potential of adding thousands of new residential units to Seymour, units that would, under current circumstances, have gone through a diligent public consultation first. Location. We know that this is not Anthem's fault, but the location is not in a town center, which is where the OCP otherwise suggested that new multifamily developments should be located and concentrated. This brings me to the last point of my presentation. And this is likely to surprise you, counsel. I would be prepared to give Anthem a higher density than what they're asking for now. No, I'm definitely not suggesting a higher density than the proposed 341 units on Litten Street, which I, as already mentioned, feel is too high. Counselor Murray has previously suggested that the Seymour Estates land should be swapped with DNV land in or closer to town centers. This would probably end up giving Anthem more density, which is always what developers want. But it would give the DNV the Seymour Estates land next to the Ron Andrews. Since this rec center has to be rebuilt entirely in the near future, this could be done on the current Seymour Estates land and remain near Canland. So all the sporting activities would remain close to each other. After the building of the new rec center on Seymour Estates land, the current Ron Andrews land, which is of course owned by the district, could then be used for social housing based entirely on the district's criteria and wishes and not what a developer wants to achieve. I think this is a great idea, which has merit and makes a lot of sense and definitely ought to be considered by council. This is called thinking outside the box. That would be a win-win for all. Anthem could achieve higher density. There could be an increase in rental and rent to own units. Unwanted traffic would not be added to Mount Simo Parkway. And council could eventually use the Ron Andrews land for much-needed social housing. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Eric Anderson. Next speaker also for a second time is Peter Teaven. Peter, can you hear me?
Yes, your worship, I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, I'm just going to go back to the presentation I was showing on the screen and continue on. Sorry, having a little trouble if you could. Okay, yeah, this is where I left off showing my position that they were already entitled to build 205,000 square feet. But if we allowed them to go to 265, we would get 90,000 square feet. Now, I prepared this analysis for council to consider. Why do I think it's appropriate to let them increase density in order to get the desirable rentals? Well, the simple answer is, and I've got a considerable amount of research into this, that rentals are 70% less profitable than market purchase units to build. And here's the simple explanation why, and I have a lot of detail I could show you if you ever want to ask. If you take as a given that a developer wants to make a markup of about 15%. If you take your cost to market up 15%, but then you work it backwards from the sale price, that's about 13% of market value. And in the event that a developer sells a unit, the buyer pays GST and the buyer pays property transfer tax. But if the developer chooses to rent that out and they keep it themselves, or they transfer the portion of the development into a new corporation, which is going to handle the rentals. The developer has to self-assess 5% GST on the market value and they have to pay that to the federal government. And they will end up paying a punitive 4.3% property transfer tax. Those two taxes together, 9.3% in the case of a 15% markup would accommodate 71.5% of lost profit. So we have a problem. This is why we haven't been seeing rentals in any numbers. This is why councils everywhere are pressured to give density in exchange for rentals. Because the federal government and provincial government, despite their words, their actions are that they punish developers for building rentals. And for this reason, I think that one of the things I'll probably talk to council another time about. And I ask you to consider here, for the rental portions, I ask you to consider enacting into our zoning bylaw, rental-only zoning, because I believe that the long-term fix to this problem is to have rental-only zoning. And in that case, we ask our federal and provincial governments to exempt these two taxes in the case of rental-only zoning and try to level the playing field. So developers really aren't skewed one way or the other. They're not punished for producing rentals. Okay, I'd just like to switch hats for a second. I told you I might comment from the perspective of the Seymour Community Association. And I want to tell you, counsel, that in our last annual meeting, the Seymour Community Association Executive did discuss this proposal. Some of the thoughts we had is, in general, we thought that the styling fit the neighborhood. We were all unanimous in our belief that the Maplewood local area plan should not apply here because this location is not in Maplewood. It sits right astride the border between Blue Ridge and Seymour. As a matter of consensus, excuse me. Sorry. It would be nice if it was less dense. As you can see, I've given some reasons why that may not be possible, but it sure would be nice. We do like the former orientation of the center oriented with a communal space in the middle, but again, that's not our choice to make. And we're pretty much all of the same consensus that the real problem here for most people's concerns is traffic. And the cause of those concerns is the bottleneck around the Ironworkers Bridge. Which, you know, I don't know if I need to remind you again, that bridge is ailing. It's not up to the current seismic standard. And according to provincial government, needs to be replaced within 40 odd years from now. So that being said, the Community Association didn't have strong feelings other than these one way or the other. Some people felt pro, some people not so much. So I wanted to report that back to you. One other item I want to bring to your attention is my understanding of some of the amenities that the developer has either offered or been tasked with completing versus is that time?
That's five minutes. Are you drawing?
I'm near, near done. I'm near done. If you'd like me to just continue for a minute.
Please.
So I have some experience with this street and on one of the neighborhood pickups, I picked up all the trash along this street. And if you see the image I've got on the right, you see a red arrow. That is the current sidewalk that is immediately adjacent to the site in question. And that is where a great number of Windsor students walk from the school to the bus stop in the Chevron Station. And if council says no, and if the developer just replaces what was there, on the other side of the street is Ron Andrews, and there's no sidewalk where I've got that colored arrow there where you see the van. If they're given a rezoning, part of the amenity plan is that the developer would build a sidewalk there. If they do not get such approval and they just replace, there's no ability to require them to build a new sidewalk and not on their property. So that puts it to the district to maintain and retain safety for the students. So I want to raise that as an issue that something needs to be done about that. I did speak with the developer during the summer when they did the demolition and they were very accommodating so that they timed the demolition when kids were out of school and the foot traffic along the street was less. And I thought that they were very respectful and responsible about that, and I I am appreciative of that. So I wanted to raise that to you. Is that something that will need to be dealt with? The last thing I want to comment in, and I'm vaguely aware that this plan has kind of morphed, but one of the features was there's to be a contribution or at least a first footstep into the area of a community shuttle. And I'm mindful when I think of community shuttle, I think of the test that TransLink did on Bowen Island two summers ago. And what we're talking about is a community shuttle like our Indian River Route Number 15 little bus. What the concept is, is the ability to summon such a shuttle by an app, a mobile app. And I understand that they tested this on Bowen. And I guess I see this, what I'm trying to say is I see this as a future in a community that I want to live in, is one where we have a major transit route and community shuttles bringing people in from the further reaches to that. So any footsteps we can make in our neighborhood to get that kind of service established, I'm appreciative of. I think with that, I'm done with my input and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Teaven. Again, I'll just restate, anybody wishes to add their name for a first, second, or third time speaking, send your name to input@dnv. And then we will also flash the phone number dial-in in just a minute, once we complete the second time list. Next up, I have Eric Carlson for a second time.
Great. Thank you, your worship, through the council. I want to bring you back to where I left off, which is that I had a very happy North Van upbringing and I want to see that for my grandchildren. And I think that the focus of bringing any new project onto stream today is about addressing sustainability, all three pillars, economic, social, and environmental. This project's been very well thought out. I mean, it's not perfect. Any big, any big development, any new change to a neighborhood is never going to satisfy everybody. But we've been working on it for about five years and we've put a lot of thinking and heart into this. And I know that developers are always sort of cashed, as people want to just go make a ton of money. And they're capital intensive, these projects, and they do require profit in order to attract bank financing and financial partners to make them exist in the first place. We almost always up in a place where the profit is the bare minimum to make the project work. And that's kind of what we strive for. And and all the things that we do in the development, including providing affordable housing, all that, often be carried on the back of, I'll say the profit and the economic potential of the project. And the ratios we end up with between the various uses reflect that basic requirement. If there is no market condos or market housing here that could generate profit, we wouldn't be able to produce one unit of affordable housing unless it was fully subsidized by a third party, whether it's ourselves or the government or whomever. So I'll just leave that to you. So coming back to where I, what I like about this project, the first, on the environmental side, I think we've really gone out of our way to address you know, today's concerns. I think higher density is essential. The days of big, single-family houses on large lots with people accessing cars, that just doesn't work if we want to get rid of our carbon intensity in this globe and solve that problem. And it's the direction we need to go on. And we can pick the very best sites for it, but basically we don't have a million years to fix this problem. You take the sites that are available as they appear and work with them in conjunction with the city. We put out a covenant for no carbon-based energy, which has been referenced here. We've got more charging stations for electric vehicles than is required under the bylaw or the rules and the regulations of the community. We're building under a progressively more green-based step building code to help reduce the carbon footprint of the building. And I think that even though, you know, we don't have a train outside on Seymour Parkway, we do have a pretty good and growing transit system. We'll provide riders for that, which I think will strengthen transit in the neighborhood and decrease the dependency on cars. I'd also add that, you know, as an employer of young people, I used to be young, I'm not anymore, like my dad used to be. I'm amazed at the amount of car share, ride share, biking, you know, commuting, e-bikes now and walking and the conscientiousness of this new generation. I was a baby boomer. We turned 16, we bought a car. We didn't even think about air pollution, a little bit, certainly not carbon. There's so much conscientiousness now that I do think that the very, the algorithms we follow as old-school developers in determining traffic are actually exaggerating what the traffic will ultimately be. That's just my opinion. I'm not trying to sell anybody on that. But in addition to the environmental opportunity we have here, my biggest emotional attachment to this project is with respect to the diversity of the community. The street I grew up on was awesome. You know, a guy sold tires, Mr. Wine sold tires, Mr. Robinson sold TV sets at Eaton's. Mr. Gens was a welder. The richest guy on the street was a pharmacist who worked for some big drugstore chain. And as a result, we just kind of all got along and figured things out and everybody struggled for money, so they said. And I think that's missing today. I go to the neighborhood I grew up on, there's just two people in each house and they're wealthy and there doesn't seem to be the kind of neighborhood or diversity that I think is so essential to have a healthy community with kids that are learning to be tolerant and growing up and doing, becoming really good contributing citizens for their community. And when I look at the rent to own, the Habitat for Humanity, the affordable housing, in addition to the market rental, and we need lots of market rental, in addition to the affordable, you know, the condo apartments, the stacked townhomes and the upgrade homes, that's seven different housing forms on this site. 20 years ago, this would have been straight townhomes. That's it. That's all it would have been because it's way easier to build one thing than it have this complicated Rubik's Cube. Again, it's part of that, that heavy thinking and the requirements of today. And I'm proud of that. And I think that that will create the type of community that we need. I know there's been concerns expressed and they're valid, and I'm empathetic. Change is a tough thing to deal with. Traffic congestion is a tough thing to deal with. And traffic congestion existed for a very long time. When I, when I commuted to UBC in 1976, the traffic to get in the Lionshead Bridge started on the upper levels highway to get to Capilano Road. If you wanted to go over the Secondos Bridge, it still started at Lonsdale. We come up with new solutions, the population growth, they needed new solutions and so it goes. You know, when my grandfather moved here in 1920, there was no traffic. And he never complained about the new traffic because he knew people had to move here. He knew that the population group was just a function of humanity. So as difficult as it is, and I said I am pathetic, we have to provide solutions today. We can't wait for perfection. If we wait for perfection, we won't do anything. At some point, you've just got to put a pin in it and go. I think this development provides a lot of great solutions for the community. It's barely economically sustainable. It provides a lot of amenity. And I really hope that council sees fit to provide the leadership required to get this across the finish line, recognizing how difficult that is. And finally, expressing my appreciation that the counselors across the region have to go through these public hearings two nights, hours and hours and hours, all kinds of conflicting opinion and thoughts. And we couldn't do what we do without your willingness to do that for very low pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. The next speaker I have is, for a second time, is Dr. Corey Cost. Corey Cost, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening again. Share the screen, I guess. Some application window, probably this one. Share. And we should be should be able to see the shared screen, hopefully. Is that correct, your worship?
Looks great.
Okay. So as I've often said, don't let perfection be the enemy of the good. However, I think I've come to the conclusion, this one is not even good. So I'm not aiming for perfection here. I think there's a number of things that should be and can be improved. Not the least of which was previous speakers saying that perhaps it should be put on a different site, which according to the OCP, it should be. It's not in a town center, which is where roads are take place. So picking up in the pandemics COVID section, steps in both the building design and operation, particularly for the two six-story apartments, the 280 units, will need to be put in place. Sadly, design changes take some time, but are much more costly later on to retrofit. I'm talking about safety features here, pandemic-proof features. I had hoped at least some changes, say in the elevator design and related safety features, especially in the public and high-traffic areas and mechanical systems design would have been incorporated. The 700-square-foot indoor shared amenity space needs carefully designed safety features. And I hope we learn from related best practices before we build more. And I gave a reference for that. I do not want, I do want to note that the ever-shrinking size of apartments over the last 20 years especially, does not bode well for disease control. Now, the rent, I heard some staff put a question and had to get a response about the rent to own versus the rental only. But there is a puzzling piece that's missing, and that is does one of them only? does, does one of them only not pay for utilities and the other does not? So there's something missing here. I, I believe that the rent to own pays for the utilities while the people who rent don't pay for water and things like that. Now on to transportation.
I think the utility is a key element. Included in the rent.
So disruptive technology is going to rapidly change transportation. It's highly recommended that you watch this video that I give a link to. And I agree that in five years, all new cars will be electric. And that within 10 years, only self-driving cars will be on the road. It's just so much safer, so much more efficient. You get a lot more traffic flow per lane with automated vehicles. It's obvious to anybody living in the area, fortunately, in some ways I do not. I live in Edsmarthville, so I'm one of the few outsiders speaking tonight, that traffic in the area is really congested, especially during rush hours. And note that adding only a few more cars to any queue that's already full has a disproportionate impact on traffic that's already congested or near a congestion. This element is rarely revealed in transportation studies of a development proposal. They just say, we add only a few and don't tell you what the impact is going to be. I guess this is just another aspect of growth not paying its own way. The solution, which is not without its controversy, of course, is congestion pricing, which usually impacts lower income groups the most. Now the OCP directives. We should look at the OCP. I want to emphasize that the OCP, it's a far greater emphasis on rental as opposed to ownership of affordable housing. It's about 10 times more references. Do the keywords searching, you'll find out. I urge council to examine how this project fits into those directives of their OCP and their decision-making process. Now in summary, I do want to mention, of course, location, location, location is key to buying a home, but it's also in placing this kind of facility. Air to heat, to water heat pumps, working, work at minus 25C, but how efficient are they? Efficiency drops to one at minus 25C. And it's already down to two at 10C. So you need extra capacity. I just want to summarize the whole thing now. Note that developer has stated only a fixed order for development, not a fixed or even preliminary time schedule for the full development. Very little progress in affordable housing has been made for private land development since the council approved something on June the 15th, 2015. That was 360 market residential and six affordable rental units. Also note that upzoning is a privilege, not a right. I have always expected this council to bargain for much more affordable rental units in any future development. It's my firm belief that's significant. I should bring this more up to date here, sorry, to the audience who's trying to follow this. Get on to the summary here, it's the final page. It's my firm belief, the last two, two sentences can be made to the proposal, I urge council to reject and send it back to staff for significant revisions. The true measure of our community, as I've always said, now and in the future, is not how well we house our wealthy members, but how well we housed our most disadvantaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cost. The next speaker and the last speaker that I've been made aware of at this point is Rian De Beer, speaking a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been a lot of confusing claims tonight that, that I've listened to. And I would just like to take a moment just to state some facts about the project and then, then I'll conclude. A third of the density on the site is orientated towards housing diversity, which is significant. That is in a combination of rental, affordable rental, habitat for humanity, rent to own. And by the way, the rent to own program now has over 700 applicants who is hoping to get a spot in one of those 25 homes, which is just staggering. Outdoor space, it's, it's not 2,000 square feet, it's over 85,000 square feet of green space, play space, both programmed and informal. We've heard that we, we, we're not in compliance with the Maplewood Town Center Plan? No, we're not, because we're not in the Maplewood Town Center Plan. We are fully OCP compliant. In fact, the OCP allows us to build over 100,000 square feet more than what we are proposing. We can build up to 1.75 Farr. We're proposing to do 1.37, which is about three quarters of the allowable density. So you know, when there's a question of what's the right kind of density for 2020 on this site, we're actually building in compliance with the old Maplewood, Maplewood's local area plan that was adopted 20 years ago. So we're really building the year 2000 density at this point. And, and that is because of the fact that we recognize these concerns around the density on the site. So we've deliberately chosen to go below that. I just wanted to correct some of those things and then just want to, you know, take a second just to say again that, you know, like, I'd like to remind us all that the choice that's before council tonight is is really a decision that needs to be made. And, and because even a no vote is a decision tonight. It's a decision to build the same housing, 114 townhomes that was considered appropriate in 1969. But a yes vote allows us to build housing that starts to meet the challenges of our community in 2020. And is there really anybody out there really that believes that the solution to today's challenges in the district lie in returning to 1969? And, and as, as Eric said, our proposal does not solve every challenge in the district and nor do we pretend that it does. But it does demonstrate environmental leadership as North Vancouver's first fossil-free community of this size. It helps to respond to that housing affordability and diversity crisis. And it demonstrates how neighborhoods can strive to become more sustainable. It's a chance for council to take a few bold steps in the right direction. And, and like I said in night one, in 1969, the council of the day were leaders in providing a different form of housing. And now 20, 51 years later, we need to respond to today's challenges and our site does just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Beer. Just checking in with the clerk, are there any first or second time speakers that have made themselves available, the call through the calling system or added their name since the last time I checked in?
At this time, we have Mr. Haynes wishing to speak a third time, but no new first time or second time speakers.
And just checking in with staff, staff, do you have any questions that has been submitted to you by council that you're preparing responses to?
Your worship, I have one more question that's been submitted and I can answer that if you would like.
Please.
The question is, can staff and/or the applicant comment on the land swap that has been mentioned by several speakers? Has this ever been discussed between staff and Anthem? Is Anthem interested in exploring a land swap? And the answer is that there has been no discussion with the applicant on a land swap as staff have not had direction from council to pursue such a concept. Staff have no indication from the applicant that they would be interested in a land swap.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hartford. So just again, just a reminder that input@dnv.org is the email address if you would like to speak a first, second or third time. Again, just restating the rules, the third time will only be permitted if, if you're not repeating yourself. And so I'm just going to check in now. Ms. Clark, have we had anyone else for a first or second time through the call-in system or otherwise?
We have not, your worship.
So you would consider that we have exhausted the speakers list a first and second time?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go now to the third time speaker list, which only has Rob Haynes on it. Mr. Haynes, I'm going to permit you to have a third time, a third five minute period, but I would just encourage you do not repeat yourself from your first two times speaking and make sure that all of your comments directly pertain to the applicant property, please. Mr. Haynes, can you hear me?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I apologize. I, I felt like after my second time, I had gone so fast, I didn't get a chance to properly finish my, my, my ideas here and the thoughts that I had. So I appreciate the extra opportunity to, to share with you. I would like to also comment though, that Mr. De Beer's most recent comment about actually the development pertaining to the Maplewood local area plan from 20 years ago. Well, it's, it's funny because I kind of thought that the development screamed 2005 to begin with. So if, if, if he's building based on 2000, you know, from, from a plan from 20 years ago, then it clearly does not meet the needs of the OCP or the MTC here. This is not a Seymour, Seymour local area plan site. It's supposed to be a Maplewood Town Center site and that is, you know, a lot of people in Blue Ridge aren't happy with that. And there's just, it does not meet those requirements. The 2,000 square feet I had, well, that's based on the, the architectural diagrams of the, of the site itself. I don't know where 85,000 square feet comes from of green space, of green space. And I was clear, I said, green space. And of course, there is land that is attached to the backyards of these townhomes, but when you look at the drawings, it's also not significant. So stormwater management, again, management and mitigation are two different things. And there's so many unknowns with what's going on here right now that it just boggles my mind as to how it's even gotten this far. I do applaud some of the actions that Anthem is trying to, to, to do here. But again, this is the wrong development in the wrong spot. It's a good development, but just not for here. This is not a community that can actually sustain this. This is not a community that can add, it's, it's not going to add value to livability of the people who already live here. It's only going to have a negative effect on those that are currently here.
I do, we're covering some old ground again here. Do you have any, any comments that you haven't addressed in your first or second time speaking?
Well, I, I would like to point out that when Mr. De Beer gets to start off with a 15-minute presentation, after the presentation by the district itself, it leaves very little room for rebuttal, particularly when the first 20 speakers were corporate partners. So it, it, it runs like a de facto filibuster. And good for me because it gave me more time to go out to my community and deliver leaflets to people within my neighborhood. And funny enough, it was within the 200 meter radius of the Lytton Street site, which is apparently all that Anthem is required to send out information to people. And I find that very disconcerting that the, that particular aspect of how this is supposed to be given out to the people who live in Blue Ridge and Seymour is so little. I, I live on Violet Street and a few blocks up from me, they did not receive this notice. But this is an issue that affects everybody that lives east of Riverside. And maybe that's a failure of the system. I don't know. I think people are working very hard. And I applaud that effort. But at the same time, having a list of corporate partners 20, 20 long and it's not going out to people who live in the actual neighborhood where will actually affect people, that seems to me to be a failure of what the public hearing is supposed to be about. When we have signage on the street that you rubberneck to see as you drive by dangerously, doesn't seem that it's really making it out for people to participate in this particular process. No childcare, no seniors living, no 50% co-employment. All of those factors that are in the OCP and the MTC are just not there. I understand why people think that the addition of these units for the below market is a good idea. I'm not just, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that. But council did just pass on the Delbrook lands, what was it, 86 more units with Hollyburn? That's a real addition to the need of the community up here. 33? That is not a need. And market rentals are still more than people can afford. So it's not, we're not talking about affordability of housing here when we say that there will be 25 units in perpetuity. When we say there's going to be 56 market rentals, that does not solve the problem. We're only looking at 30, 33 units. 33 out of 341. That does not solve our problems as a district. And to say otherwise, that's an insult. I, I, I apologize for perhaps repeating some of my points and I know that's not really allowed. But there's got to be an opportunity for people to rebut against all of the stuff that's coming at us. And I thank you for your time on that. I do believe that Anthem is doing their best, but it is not the best for my neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time and I appreciate you giving me this extra moment. Thank you very much. Have a good holiday season. Stay safe, everybody. And councillor Bond, I love the hat. Cheers.
Thank you, Rob Haynes. I have had another submission for a third time speaker to me and Dr. Cost, you haven't been repeating yourself. So I'll just give you the same opportunity to address the, the meeting for, for five more minutes. You're muted, Dr. Cost.
Thank you, your worship. Just to clarify, a point of law, just because a higher FSR is in the OCP, council's not obliged to give that density to any developer under any circumstances, unless council wishes it to be so. Only rezoning by council can grant a developer a higher FSR as in the OCP or even higher than what the OCP says by amending the OCP. Just to clarify, the OCP may say 2.5, but that doesn't mean you are given 2.5. That's only under certain circumstances that council has outlined in the OCP. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cost. Just returning to the clerk, I don't have anyone else who's indicated to me that they wish to speak a first, second or third time. Do you have anyone that's indicated that to you?
No one has indicated a desire to speak.
Checking with Michael Hartford, have you had any other questions from council that you're preparing responses to?
Correction, your worship, Mr. Tevin would like to speak an additional time.
Okay, well, I'll go to, now, now, Mr. Tevin, I kind of gave you 10 minutes the last time you spoke for five. So can I just get you to keep it down to the most brief comments?
Very brief, your worship, very brief. May I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. I, I'm just responding to the comments and assertions I heard about the prospect of a land swap with Anthem. And certainly from a personal point of view, I would think that would be great. I don't know if you recall, but I, I actually floated such an idea of a partnership to get us a new Rhonda Andrews Rec Center back during the public information meeting, but was told that that boat had long ago sailed. But I'd be very interested in this. But one of the things I think that would pose a problem is if council was to decline this application and then enter into such negotiations. If it were me, and I'm no lawyer, but if it were me, I would be very concerned about bad faith negotiating because if we were to have a council that declined the proposal being put forward by the applicant and then turned around and tried to negotiate for a load of, lower value, I, I think that would be a very very testy negotiation. And so I, I think that's another reason to approve it, even if you intend to go and negotiate on that basis, which I think would be a fantastic idea. Thank you. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Just checking back in with Mr. Hartford, do you have any responses to, to council questions?
Your worship, we have no additional questions from council at this time.
Thank you. Checking in with the clerk, do we have any other first, second or third time speakers that have indicated an interest to speak?
We have no additional speakers, your worship.
Thank you. I'm going to declare that we have exhausted the speaking list, first, second and third time. And I'm going to go to council for a direction. I believe councillor Hanson, you raised your hand.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'd like to move the public hearing be closed and the matter be referred to the soonest possible regular council meeting for second and third reading.
Thank you very much. Is there a second or for that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by councillor Forbes. All right, at this point, I'm going to call the question on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, say nay. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'm going to declare unanimous support for the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. And so just for members of the public, what that means is that this hearing is now closed. Council is not Council is not permitted to receive any additional uh, information regarding this proposal. Uh, and what will happen is um, the item will be put on our our council agenda for second and third reading, where councillors will be uh, permitted an opportunity to share their uh, their vote and share their reasons and uh, and then it it actually is is not until after adoption that we're allowed to uh, fully discuss the item again. Uh, but uh, so I appreciate everybody's understanding on that matter, that uh, that new additional information is not permitted. Uh, and councillors are still permitted to just review the minutes and review the the video. Uh, councillor Mary was not able to join us this evening, and she has already committed to review the uh, the minutes uh, for this uh, meeting and uh, so that she can participate in the vote. Uh, so at that, we have completed the business of the evening. Uh, will someone move adjournment to the meeting?
I will move adjournment.
And I accept from councillor Back. Thank you all very much. We do appreciate everybody sticking it through through a second night, and uh, once again, I want to pass on my apologies on behalf of the district in North Vancouver to the applicant for the technical challenges that we had with our first evening. Uh, we uh, we hope that you're satisfied that we've done everything we can to uh, to make sure that this evening went smoothly. Uh, thank you all. Uh, I I think at this point, I have to say, um, I don't know, councillor Bond, you you definitely look the most Christmasy. I don't know, would you like to give a a Christmas or a holiday greeting as as this is our last meeting before the break?
Oh, you're putting me on the spot. Councillor Back had such a great one at the at the last meeting, so I'm drawing a blank right now, but I think yeah, it it's it's been such a year, I don't even know how to describe it. Um, the challenge and the strain and the the loss and the coming together that we've had in this community over the past year, um, I I think has really brought us to the edge, but also brought us together in a in a strange way, and so uh, as we go forward into this break and it's time to rest and um, recharge in our own households and with family in a virtual way, uh, I'd just like to wish everyone uh, happy holidays, a Merry Christmas, uh, Happy Hanukkah, and all of the other celebrations that people have over this time. And uh, you know, we'll see each other back in virtually in the new year and hopefully soon after that, back uh, in real life.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, councillor Bond, and thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Have a great night.
Night.